Are you okay over there? Okay. We're gonna call the meeting back to order. We got a lot to accomplish. I'm sorry? We're missing a commissioner, but we've got a lot of hearings ahead of us and there is a graduation tonight that I know many people need to be attending. So, um, what do we do? Start? Wait? Let's start. Okay. So, we are on number six. Appeal by Farrington Thomas. And Paul, you're gonna take it from here?
Uh, correct.
We're ready.
Yes, we're ready here.
I'm not here.
Paul Grow with the Planning Department. I guess this is working fine. This is appeal number 2016-534. This is BLB Collaborative Farms, attorney general Thomas, president, appealing a denial of a commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. Again, project description, appeal of a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director, and this registration was denied for the following reason, and that is the registrant failed to obtain a business license application by the September 7th, 2016 deadline. Location, we have, the site is 5.12 acres. It's located at 5938 South Worth Road, Bellard Springs. That's township for North Range 10 East, Section 32. There's the site on the map. If you go back up this way, it's about two miles up into Burson, and back out this way, it's about three or four miles back into Highway 26th, La Cintas area. On June 26th, 2016, the applicant Farrington Thomas, on behalf of BLB Collaborative Farms, filed a commercial cannabis registration for 22,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation area, who was pending the application pending registration for that amount. Upon review of the applicant, of the, of the submittal, it was discovered that the registrant did not provide the planning department with a business license application as required by the September 7th, 2016 deadline. Because of that, the application was denied. Subsequent to the denial, the registrant did obtain a business license application on March 13th, 2017, and that's what we have on the screen right now. The appellate in their appeal letter states they did obtain a business license application prior to September 7th and brought it to the planning department. They were unable to obtain a copy of that license because the, they, they state that the copy machine in the planning department was broken. The appellate points out that the tax collector and the planning department do not keep records of anyone picking up a business license application. And additionally, the appellate points to a purported lack of record keeping and general chaos in the planning department. In response to that, it, the appellate states that they did pick up a business license, they obtained a business license application and brought it to the planning department prior to September 7th. They do not state a specific date. There is not a, you know, "We came on such and such a date. We delivered it to you." There are, there are no specifics about that claim to the statement that they were unable to obtain a copy because the copy machine within the planning department was broken. I actually checked with Annette, the office manager, and we looked for repair record of any sort. We requested for repair. Nothing like that exists. But had that been the case, it would have been rather simple. The appellate could have simply chosen to go elsewhere to obtain a copy. It's literally 10 steps from our counter to the counter at the building department. They also have a copy machine there. There's any number of reasons you can think of why the appellate could simply obtain a copy elsewhere. If that had been the case and the copy machine was actually broken. As far as the tax collector and the planning department not keeping records of business license applications that are taken out, that is not required of the tax collector. There's no reason for them to do that, and it's certainly outside the purview of the planning department to keep a record of that. We might as well be keeping, you know, records of who's taken what car out of, you know, Public Works on any given day. To the point of the lack of record keeping and chaos within the planning department, I would say we have literally hundreds of business license applications that are, that have been submitted to the planning department and are maintained there. Yesterday, we received a, we received a brief from the appellate's agent, Mr. Clark. There were some arguments within it, and one of the sections that, one of the, those sections was labeled "lack of a complete application." And in that section, he goes back to point out that there is no place where a record is kept of someone actually pulling out a business license application. And I would like to point out that that is not exactly true because records of that sort are actually kept at the county assessor's office. When one goes down to apply for a business license and obtains the business license application, what you receive from the tax collector's office is a blank form that looks like this. This form states down at the bottom, right in this area right here, that the person desiring to obtain the business license must go visit these departments, that's the assessor, planning, building, sheriff, in that order, in order to obtain the business license. So, someone picking up a license application, their first stop is gonna be right over here at the assessor's office. When you go to the assessor's office, you're asked to fill out this form right here. It's called a business questionnaire. Once you do that, they will stamp your business license application and send you on over to planning. Now, this business license questionnaire has information that's related to the business that's proposed, and I assume that's kept for the purposes of taxing that business. County assessor keeps this piece of paper here. So, there is a record. If you actually walk from the tax collector's office down to the assessor's office, they're gonna ask you to fill out this form, and they keep it. My understanding is that for the cannabis applications, they kept these and have a database for anybody appearing down there and filling out this form. They know who's been there. This, as I said previously, the appellate did go and pick up a business license application, and when they did that, they did that on March 13th. They took that license application down the hall to the assessor's office where they were asked to fill out the business questionnaire, which is what you see on the screen right here. And you can see that is, again, March 13th. It matches the date on the business license application. So, they filled this out on that day. I was given this copy by the assessor. So, the, you know, the obvious question to ask is, have you seen anyone's previous to this? Right? Well, I asked them to check their records, and there was no record of a prior business questionnaire being completed at their office. So, basically, we don't have a business license application in our files dated prior to September 7th that meets those requirements. And neither does the county assessor have a business questionnaire that's dated prior to September 7th. Basically, there was no, you know, we would say that there was no, the appellate did not actually go and obtain a business license prior to September 7th, 2017. I think I'm gonna leave it at that. It was, um, I'm trying to turn this, is there anything you wanted to address in terms of the brief that was filed just yet?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I'm Ethan Turner, deputy county counsel. I represent planning with respect to marijuana issues. I reviewed this brief yesterday, and Mr. Clark makes a couple of allegations about the way he responded to our public records request, which I would dispute. He called our response invasive, and he attached some emails to it. But I also have emails that I've looked back through, and I found that I had had several conversations with him and memorialized our conversations by sending him follow-up emails. And we clarified that he was not asking for every business license that had ever been submitted, and that he was looking for the written procedures that go along with each of the departments as the business licenses are processed. And as it turns out, there aren't really any written procedures in any of the departments, not even the assessor's office where they use these forms. So, he was only, we were only able to provide him with the instructions that the tax collector has for their own employees, whereby they just hand a person a business license questionnaire or application. And there doesn't really, wouldn't appear to be any reason why they would write down who they give them to, because if they give them to someone, that person might walk out and never turn it to any other department. I mean, they get circulated and brought back to them, and then that's when they grant the business license.
I just wanted to also, just step in for a second so we don't go too far afield. I understand that, you know, Ethan's explaining some, or defending the county's actions with respect to the Public Records Act. I just wanna remind the commission that that issue is not before the commission. There are remedies under the Public Records Act if Matt Clark felt that he was not given documents he was entitled to.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's the only thing I really wanted to address. And I'm sure Mr. Clark's gonna raise a few issues in his presentation that we can overlook when it comes to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could add just one thing. Paul had indicated that there isn't any record of business licenses in the planning department. While we don't keep a, a log or anything like that, the record keeping that we have is a copy of that application, or the actual application itself, in the files for the cannabis registrations. That is our record, and our records show that there was no such document.
What would you do if, heavens forbid, your copy machine were broken? What would you, how would you get your record into your copy?
Well, typically, we'll retake the original application. We keep it in our file. At the time that we're ready to issue the registration, we say, "Come on in. We've signed off our component of it. You need to take it over to the building. You need to get it to the sheriff's office, and then you can take it back." So, we have the original.
We have the original.
Yeah. It's only if the applicant wanted to have a copy would we necessarily run a copy of it.
Thank you.
Well, Quinn, this is the original that the appellate submitted on March 3rd. This is what we do. It's keeping our files.
This, this concept of a copy machine not working in the planning department? How many copy machines do you folks have?
We have one in our department.
One total? That's all you've got?
Yes.
I have four in my house. No, five. I have five.
Actually, we have, we have two because we, we could run, you know, but the, the primary copy machine, but yeah, if we needed to run a copy, we could figure out a way. We could go next door to the building department. We could scan it and print it. There's other ways that copies could be made if it were that critical.
Further, there was no record of any repair order during that entire period, so the copy machine was simply not broken.
Any other questions? Is there a representative here, Mike? Is there a representative here for the BLB Collaborative Farms?
All right, yes, thank you, members of the commission, Madam Chairman, members of staff. Thank you for your time today. My name is Matt Clark, and I'm honored to represent BLB Collaborative Farms, whose president, Mr. Farrington Thomas, is with us today, and he is the applicant, the human applicant of record on this appeal. I, I'd like to begin by, if I may, bringing Mr. Thomas up here for a moment and just asking him a quick question.
You get 15 minutes so you can go from there.
Great. Your name is Farrington Thomas?
Yes, my name is Farrington Thomas.
And you are the president and primary applicant, as I said, of BLB Collaborative Farms in the application here?
Yes, I am.
Great. Mr. Thomas, did you take out a business application prior to September 7th and bring it to the planning department to submit it?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, sir. Everything that they said and were talking about with business licenses, they're right, and it makes sense if we had business licenses. But we don't have business licenses. There were zero business licenses submitted as of September 7th, according to what the urgency ordinance says. The total number of business licenses actually given out was zero. Instead, because of efficiency matters and not going through the trouble, I'm assuming, of, you know, approving 736 business licenses, only to turn around and revoke half of them, however many of them, apparently the county made what I think is a fairly sensible decision of leaving them pending while the application was pending, so that your business license would be approved afterwards, just to make things easier. The problem with that is these processes and, you know, records that are capped for business licenses were not carried over to the business license application. So, when they say that the county, that the business license application, there's nothing that requires it to have any sort of recording attached to it, that's because it, and because it's merely the receiving of a form, that's because there's a follow-up to receiving that form where you submit it and it is considered. In this case, that follow-up occurred months later. And in fact, in some cases, and, you know, all the cases of the pending applications, there's still no business license. It's just an application, and that's all. So, all of these things they're talking about with recording and so forth, it's, it's irrelevant because the, the business licenses were never issued, right? You've got an urgency ordinance that calls for business licenses to be submitted by September 7th, and the county went ahead and suspended that rule without amending the statute. And this is what's resulted, is that we've got a system that should have recording and should have things attached to it, but instead, it's been shuffled off to the side where no such process exists. The result being a "my client's word against yours" sort of situation, which I have to imagine is incredibly frustrating. We talked about this with the Snowden case earlier, about the issues of belief and so forth. I, I believe my client, and I believe the statement he made here earlier. And I have this. This is a business license taken out by a different person. If I may? It was brought to the county offices. It was stamped received, and it never found its way into file. He had a photograph of it. That he took right there. And lucky for this other person, he happened to take a photograph of it. So, he was able to bring it back later and prove that he in fact had gotten one. But the fact was, it got lost. And so, he was able to fill out another business license application and bring that one in instead, which you can see by the second one is dated April 4th, 2017. So, these things do happen, and the problem is behind them, there's no recording of what went on. We heard earlier today about the chaos. We heard it from the lips of Mr. Maurer, our planning director, and we heard it from Madeline Flandre. It was a chaotic situation down there. The idea that something would get lost is not outrageous. In fact, it's perfectly normal. The problem is that now, his entire application is being rejected because of a lost document. And as for believing him, I'd like to just submit this. This guy did everything else. This was not an easy process to get through this, right? This was an incredibly difficult registration process with an incredibly low success rate for applicants. This guy did everything. We heard from, you know, county here just now, the only thing wrong with this is a business license, which, like I said, he insists he took out the application and brought it in accordingly. Therefore, I think the only sensible thing to do in the case, or in the face of this chaos, documents that are obviously missing, processes that should be there that have been shuffled off to the side and forgotten about, the only thing to do in the case like this is to let him turn his business license in, which he already did. And I'd like to state that that one on March 13th, 2017, was after the denial letter, and he asked me if he thought, if I thought it would be worthwhile to bring one in, and I told him it probably wouldn't hurt. So, please do not use this as evidence that he never had one in the first place. That was on my advice that he came in and filled out another one, just in case. So, you have a business license application from him. I also have heard from my discussions with Peter and Ethan, this is the only case you have before you where a business license would be the sole grounds for denial. The bottom line is that these denials usually come with a variety of offenses and so forth. This is the only one that's just a business license. And given the chaos and the procedural issues involved, you should just let him turn another one in. This was an excellent site. He passed everything. He got his fence up. He has his permits. He did everything correctly. You could tell by the fact that he passed everything else.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
One, the prior hearing was on April 27th.
Yes.
We granted a continuance so you could file a brief.
Yes.
You filed it yesterday. If you talk about delayed follow-ups, I think this is disrespectful to the commission that you would submit the brief the day before the hearing, and which we got last night.
I'd like to mention, as I mentioned to Mr. Grow yesterday when I turned it in, it's my opinion that it doesn't add a significant amount of information in any significant way. Then we're talking today about the same things that we talked about last.
If it's insignificant, we could ignore it then. Could we ignore also that you say that it's outrageous to believe that the county staff and judicial officers can be neutral on the subject? Is this effective advocacy for your client? That you're saying we can't be neutral?
I mean, I would ask you to look at my client and not me, sir.
I'm, I'm talking to you as an advocate. What, what purpose is that statement in there except to cause resentment and, and...
No, my issue was never to cause resentment, Mr. Ladish. The idea here is to illustrate the chaos and the problems that are going on.
At the time, which we don't even know what date he brought this in, we have no idea what date this was, there wasn't chaos going on. We were talking earlier today about June 30th. What, are you saying that for the last year and a half, or last year, there's been chaos in the planning department, and they haven't, they haven't kept track of what's going on?
What I'm saying is that it is entirely possible that my client is not lying to you, that it is, that it is perfectly reasonable to believe what he's telling you here, that he got his application and turned it in. And that it was simply lost.
If we were to follow the instructions on the form, take it to these offices in this order, we would have had a record in the county tax assessor's office that he'd been in there and filled out the, the business information.
But the business license wasn't processed normally. It was suspended and held in abeyance.
That's, that's entirely beside that point. If he'd followed the instructions in the form up to the time he purportedly gave it to the planning commi, planning department, he would have had a notation at the county tax assessor's office saying he had been in, and he'd, then they'd signed off on it, and they submitted the, the form to them, the business information form.
So, my public records request, which was submitted shortly after, or in fact, before the previous hearing.
Are you gonna respond to that question about whether, you know, wouldn't it show that the assessor's office had seen it if he'd followed the instructions on the form?
Uh, no, sir, because people were instructed to take that directly to planning.
They were instructed to take it directly to planning?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Isn't it possible that, you're right, it could've, the form could've got lost? Isn't it possible that he lost it and it never got turned in?
On his way from the assessor's office to the planning department?
Assessor's office doesn't have a copy of it?
I mean, we heard from Mr. Thomas earlier, his statement, that he went to the assessor's office, he picked up the form, he filled it out, and he brought it to planning.
What, what day was it? If you can tell us that he brought the business license application to planning?
Yes, Mr. Thomas, what day approximately was that?
For the license?
For the business license application, yes.
For the entire application?
No.
Just the one form that, not that one, but the previous one?
Just the one form. I don't know the exact date. I will admit, this has been utter chaos for me, trying to abide by all of the rules.
It was before September 7th?
Yes.
Do you know approximately one month?
It would have to have been in June. It would have to have, I, I...
July, maybe? August? There were three months there.
Yeah. The only way that I can refer to dates at this point is my wife's birthday during that time, because I was utterly busy, crazy busy during that time, and her birthday was July, July 13th. So, it had to have been before that, because I took a week to spend with her, because I hadn't spent any time with my wife prior to that.
Did you get your business license set up at the same time as your seller's permit?
Yes.
And what day was the seller's permit?
Seller's permit is June 14th.
Can you show them that on your phone?
Yes.
June 14th?
Kelly, instead of having him come down the line, if you could just verify the date for all of us, that would be great.
It says effective June 9th.
June 9th is when I got it. June 14th is the date that I started conversing with Matt to make sure that I had everything. And we were just going through the process to make sure that I had everything in accordance and in line with his checklist, to make sure that I had it.
Okay. Okay, I just, we've got cords down here, so we ask that nobody come before the podium. And Kelly, you seeing the date for us? Can you verify?
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, what's the date?
June 9th is what shows on the top.
June 9th is what is on the actual, it's a screenshot. I took a picture of my computer screen.
Okay.
I took the picture on June 14th. I applied for the seller's permit on the night.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Actually, I have a question then.
Yes.
Did you have your phone with you when you, when you turned in this form to the planning department?
Yes, I did. I did, and I should have taken a picture. You're absolutely right. I didn't take that step because when I handed it to the person that accepted my application, he assured me that everything was okay, and I was just relieved to be able to turn it in and pay everything and get it in my time. So, I didn't take that extra step in securing or taking a picture because I entrusted, I entrusted that it would be handled properly. Due to me handling my side of it properly, I thought that I had dotted all of my i's and crossed all of my t's, and I thought that handing the paperwork in would be sufficient enough. I didn't know that I actually had to, I didn't actually know that I needed to take a picture or have some type of proof that I actually turned this in. If I would, going back now, I would do everything totally different as far as turning the paperwork in, as far as what I've done and what I've been able to come here and complete, I wouldn't do anything different.
So, when you were told the copier machine was broken, you didn't think to back it up at that point? Because that was a really big deal for your attorney, is the copy machine being broke. So, when we're sitting here listening to this whole thing, I, I mean, you, you are a document person. Really nice. Love that. Compliments to you.
Thank you.
But when you're told supposedly that the copy machine...
I wanted to literally run out of here. I am scared beyond my wits of this whole process. I didn't come here to become a commercial cultivator. I came here to jump into the cannabis industry. I am a chef by trade. I wanted to learn how to infuse cannabis within food and become a celebrity chef that way. I got forced into the situation, and I jumped through all of the hoops that were placed in front of me. So, once I got to that point of being able to just hand in a completed package that I was confident in myself in handing in, I literally handed it in and excused myself for at least a week, and because at that point, I was about to have a break down.
So, was the copy machine broke or not?
Um, when I asked... When I asked for a copy of it, the copy, the person that I handed it to told me that he was not able to give me a copy, because he said there was something wrong with the copy machine at that point. Whether it was broke or not working or replaced or any of that, I honestly don't know.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarity on that.
Yes.
I have another question.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't right now.
I think we've talked about this before and I just don't remember the answer. Is it true that you don't actually pay for the business license?
No, you do not. And sir, that's one thing that I would love to point out is.
So you've never ever paid it until the March?
Why would I, why would I pay?
Understood, understood.
Okay, yes, sir.
Everybody here remembers that. I just couldn't remember.
Okay, when you visited the assessor's office and you got the form, were you given a form of questionnaire to fill out?
No, sir. I was given an application and I was told to take the steps that I took and I turned it in.
I know this can get confusing. I understand that you pick up the form at the tax collector's office and then possibly take it to the tax assessor's office. Did you pick up, did you pick up the form at the tax collector's office or did you?
I visited the tax collector's office several times and I picked up a number of different forms. I turned it in and, excuse me, let me get my co-pension. Yes, I went over to the tax collector's office, obtained a proper paperwork to be signed, turned in, and I feel that I have done my diligence with this, yes.
Thank you. I just didn't want you inadvertently to be saying you got it at the tax assessor's office when you got it at the tax collector's.
So is it the first time you knew that the building, the business license wasn't correct or hadn't been turned in or whatever? Was that when you got the denial letter?
Yes, sir.
And that was in late February or?
Yes, sir. And as soon as I spoke with Paul Grow, I was actually visiting my wife on one of the rare occasions that I was able to last year. And I immediately jumped on the plane to start rectifying everything that was considered cause for my denial.
And before the current situation, there was other issues that?
Yes, sir, there was a background check.
And those have been resolved?
Yes, sir.
Let me take another stab at this, because I think I messed it up the first time. Okay, you pick up the form for the business license application at the tax collector's, right?
Yes.
That's what happened here. Now, did you take it to the assessor's office?
Whatever steps were listed, I was pretty much operating on idle pilot, being my lawyer, and whatever was asked for me to do, I did.
Okay, the form says you must visit the first three departments person in the order listed to obtain approvals. And the first one is the assessor.
Mr. Worcester discussed, the regular process for business licenses was inverted to deal with the planning issue. And everything was waiting on planning stamp to occur first.
Well, the one I have here that submitted March 13th has the assessor, all right, dating it and signing it. That was also true back in June of last year, wasn't it?
No, sir. We were just handed applications at that point.
But did you read the application?
Read the application, filled the application, now turned the application in, yes.
But on that application was the instruction that Commissioner Worcester was just citing?
Well, this court has discussed.
I'd like to hear his answer.
Not a court.
Did I return back to the tax assessor and have it signed or?
Take it from the collector's office. As the instructions say, take it to the assessor's office, it's first in order. And if you had, then it would have gotten checked off.
The details of that there are very blurred for me. It was a very, it seems like almost years ago at this point.
I understand.
So what steps I actually took of how it's supposed to go, I'm not actually sure. But I know in my heart that I turned this paper in or else, oh, I, why would I come back and reapply for it? Why would I jump through all of the little hoops knowing that anything can get me denied, anything? And why would I not just apply for something at this point? After months and trials and tribulations of everything, this has been chaotic for me personally. So I can understand how something might get lost in my hands or someone else's hands or anything. We're talking about one sheet of paper that has to cross five different desks. It's obvious that something can be lost and it has been lost before. I would just like the chance to just turn in this last piece of paperwork and pretty much move on with my life.
Is that all you have for now?
Yes.
You'll have rebuttal or public comment?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay to go to public comment?
Should I be seated? Should I be seated?
Please.
Thank you.
Unless you want to stand in front of the people that want to talk. Might not work too well. All right, is there a public comment?
As Bill Wilson again, District 1, as somebody who helped with this whole process or tried to help people, actually help people fill out their forms, the way it went normally was get the application from the business license from the tax assessor. Or, yeah, the tax assessor. And we weren't asked to take it to appraisal. We took it to the planning department. We turned in all the paperwork. I noticed when we actually got our personal one back, that was stamped that next day. So possibly we were when we took that paperwork over there. I don't remember doing that. Asked to take it back to the assessor's office and have it stamped, because it was stamped the very next day when we received our paperwork back. But it was February when planning dropped it, stamped it off. Then it was held up in the sheriff's department for God knows how long until he actually recused himself from even being a part of the process. And then our application was actually done in another day or two. So the whole process was drug out because of lack of staff, because of their overwhelming number of applications that the county received and people that wanted to do this. But actually, to the best of my memory, we did just turn it in to the planning department. And I assume the planning department sent it over to the assessor's office. The assessor's office served, verified the application as to the parcel number and the lot and the ownership of the property and then stamped it and gave it back to somebody. But I don't remember doing that personally myself.
You didn't go to all the?
Three different applications that I was part of being submitted. It was dropped off along with the water quality control application and the business, and the tax assessor's application and the, or not tax, BOF. State Board of Equalization sales tax, which seemed to be a redundant piece of paper that was added in.
So, Mr. Wilson, if I understood you correctly, you did not hand carry that business license application to each department? You just turned it into one and it went from there?
We just turned it into planning and it was actually done. Now, we did, we're given back a packet after planning was done to take to the sheriff's department. We were, that was part of that process. And being involved very early in the beginning, I don't remember taking it back to the assessor. I'm not going to say we didn't.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not going to swear to you that we didn't. But I don't remember ever taking that business license to any department and having it stamped.
Okay.
So to make sure I got you right, you on your own cases, three of which?
Three of which I was part of the process.
The business license application form from the tax collector?
The, I can take you to the office. It's the tax, the tax collector's office where the business licensers are issued. We picked up the application there, filled it out, turned it into planning along with the packet.
So you did not go from a tax collector's office down the hall to the assessor's?
I don't remember doing that. I won't swear to it, but I don't remember that being a part of the process. I'm 67 years old, a year and a half ago, and you're asking, did I do that? I wouldn't stand up and swear to anything, sorry.
I appreciate your caution.
But I do believe that was the way things went as, on those three that I was involved in, ours personally and two other that I assisted people in.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I've been before you guys a number of times. I actually had two applications submitted. We did the same thing. My clients got the form, turned it in. They didn't walk it through any departments.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I can add to that perhaps. We have accepted a number of business license applications that had not yet been signed off by the assessor's office. We do not route them to the other departments. Once we have, we're ready to issue the registration, we will call the registrant and say we are ready to issue it. The last thing you need to do is finish up the business license process. They come in and pick up their form and they then take it to the other departments that need to sign off on it, go back to the tax collector, get the business license issued, bring that back to us, at which point we then issue the registration. There are a couple of things that have been said by Mr. Clark. The process was shuffled to the side and forgotten about. The process was suspended and held in abeyance and that it was inverted. None of those are true. We, the process is the same. The only thing we changed was the fact that we were unable to issue the licenses before September 7th, because we had not completed the processing of those. And we were not going to issue a business license for something that may not be in compliance with. So we decided that satisfying that condition of the ordinance would be made by submitting the business license application, starting the process. Because beyond that, it was out of their control, it was in the county's control. So as long as they submitted their application to planning. And many of the registrations did go directly from the tax collector to planning. Gave us their form with their signature on it, you know, by the September 7th date.
You did not require them to go back?
We did not require them to go back. They would have to get the sign out by the assessor before it could be issued. But as far as submitted to planning, that was not required.
Okay. Do you have any rebuttal? Wait, let me make sure there's no more public comment before I do that. No? You're not public. We're going to give you a chance for rebuttal.
Yes, I think the business license application was due in our office on September 7th. It wasn't part of the, necessarily had to be part of the original submitted prior to June 30th. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think I just heard the appellant state that they had gone and obtained their business license application somewhere around the middle of June. The date might have been June 14th. That was two weeks before they turned their application into the planning.
It was July, he was, he spoke to July, not June. Correct.
Excuse me. Then I'll take that back.
His wife's birthday, I think it was a triggering point.
There was a mention of June.
You don't agree?
Okay, I was wrong then. I'll reel that back in.
Well, I think what was said was that he obtained the business license application about the same time he got the seller's permit. And the seller's permit was obtained June 9th. And so I think you were correct, Mr. Grow.
And well, that's the direction I was going with this. That would have meant that he had this in his possession for two, maybe three weeks prior to submitting his application on June 28th. In that case, he had control of that business license application. It may be simply that he misplaced it or it didn't, you know, get included in his packet when he submitted his, made a similar application.
So I recall from a previous case, this seller's permit, the effective date of it coming into effect can be predated.
Right, that's true.
Okay, we'll get some clarity on that. That's not kind of, that's not how I heard it. So I'll get clarity on what you just said.
As far as?
He didn't state that he did the business application at the same time he did the seller's permit. That's not what I heard.
I thought it was about the same time. That's what.
He said the same time.
Yeah, he said it was about the same.
You guys listen to the same person I am. All right, well, because I, when we were talking about it and he was referencing the wife's birthday, the date I wrote was July 13th. And then that was, it was probably the week before that, he said. So it would have been the first week of July, is what I understood.
Is it possible that you folks have the seller's permit form there that would show not the date it was effective, but the date it was actually signed or issued? I think those are two completely different dates.
No, I don't, you're correct. They are two completely different and we don't have access to that.
But he showed us on his phone?
He showed us on his phone. Showed the date it was effective. That was, that's a printed, computer-generated date. But some, as I remember looking at these before, somewhere maybe even up on the very top, there's a date where they actually.
No, not on the, not on the actual seller's permit itself. That information isn't available only to the holder of the seller's permit.
Remember they had to go in and get the?
Yeah, yeah, but it was fine print typed on there.
No, it's not on the seller's.
It would appear based on the documents we have in our, in our file, that the seller's permit was submitted along with the application for registration on the 28th. There's not a date stamp on it. There's a stamp on the bottom that says scanned. And we scanned the whole packet after it came in. Things that came in after that date were date stamped. And so the seller's permit was taken out sometime before June 28th and was submitted along with the application packet.
Okay, I'm going to let them have their little bit of rebuttal time, because everybody looks like they have mass confusion in their head. Would you like to come back up, please? Did you, you already spoke to public? Yeah, I'm going to, you know what? You keep doing this two times to me. Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. We're going to hear from the rebuttal now.
I'd like to rebut by addressing what Mr. Mauer said, that I have said that things were put in abeyance, suspended, inverted, et cetera. And that that's simply not true. Letting businesses operate before they have a license is putting the cart before the horse. And I don't think.
Don't interrupt his rebuttal, please. Because I got this.
This process that they're describing makes sense. And sure, the process is still there. But when you have people operate their businesses before the license is complete, is filled out, I mean, that strikes me as inverted. You know, business first, license second, that's not how that works. And yet that is this county's policy on how to do these right now for these cannabis license applications. And like I said, I understand the impetus behind it to not create an inefficient system where, you know, licenses get issued and then have to be revoked. But this business license issue has caused difficulties across the board. This is not the only one. And I think that furthermore, you know, I suggest in my brief that this is an excessive fine. And I meant no personal disrespect to this tribunal through that. Given, you know, the situation here, I think that the solution is just to have him fill out his business license and move on. This is an excellent site that has passed every environmental, background check, criminal issue that's come before it.
Done? Okay. Let me explain to you that we're not inverted, we're not doing things backwards. And if that's how you feel, then nobody should be operating at all. We put an urgency ordinance into effect for people that were already operating. Not that they were applying to operate, they were already operating and we were stopping a land grab. We have not permitted anybody. We're registering people. So it's not inverted. It was an urgency ordinance to protect our county in a health and safety mode. So if your argument is that we are inverted, we shouldn't be allowing people to operate without their business license, then your client should not be in business at all, because we're following your line of thinking. Now, you need to look at what happened to our county and the reason the urgency ordinance went into effect. And we had to put a stopgap in there for the land grab. And we had to put a stopgap in there for the land grab. And then we had to find a way to get through a registration process and meet proper guidelines. I, when you, the statements that you're making are doing your client's no favor whatsoever. Because what you're telling me is, we're doing it backwards, and they should have had that business license before they operated. But, your client was operating before he had a business license knowingly, or he wouldn't have qualified under the urgency ordinance. So, we, we're here today to not talk about inverted. We're here to talk about whether your client and whether we believe the case that you're presenting, and he got his business license on time. He went through several steps before the June 30th date. Congratulate him, because he didn't wait till the last day. That's awesome. But did he miss a step, is the question, in the process? And it is a tough program to get through. But it had specific deadlines and specifically dates. So none of those other things that you're talking about matter to me. The only thing that matters is, do I believe he got his business license and somehow that application process was lost? The only thing that's putting doubt in my mind is that your client is Mr. Documentation, and that is awesome. But he's missing a giant piece of documentation here today. So, I'm going to see if any of the other commissioners have any questions for you, and then we can move forward. No? No? No?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Did your client submit his business license application to the planning department with the rest of his registration application, or separately?
There's the good question.
I submitted everything together.
All at one time?
All at one time.
How sure can you be that you included the business license application with that packet?
As sure as I stand here today, in front of you, and speak these words, I broke my back to make this happen.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And as far as Mr. Documentation goes, I'm not Mr. Documentation at all. This is why I have legal counsel. This is why I have a business partner as well. I am document-oriented, but my wife is Mrs. Documentation. I try and do my best, and I was doing my best.
Well, you were able to look everything up in your phone and provide us with dates that we needed. So, I just have a specific question. And that date that you went in with everything and your full packet, was June 9th?
Um, no.
That's the date on his seller's permit?
No, I have the pictures on my phone. It was the day that literally I came in here and I was...
Thank your wife for that.
I was on the fourth page, and I was number 20 on the fourth page. I have pictures and video to show. It was June 27th, the first day that I came in. And I had to come back, and on the 28th, I came in here and I waited almost, I want to say six or seven hours, and I was able to turn it in with Scott.
And, and that included your business...
And then I had to go over to the planning department and turn something else in. I'm not sure if, that's, I'm not Mr. Documentation.
But that included your business license application?
It included an entire packet of things that needed to be turned in. Yes, including the business, including the business.
But I thought your problem was that you took it into the planning department, and their copier was broken. I'm really getting confused now.
Um, so am I. So am I.
Okay, so I'm going to just stop you for one second, because we can verify for you. Paul, you have the packet in front of you. You can see what was turned in on June 28th.
I can see that his application was received on June 28th.
Okay, but then you didn't have time to review them at that point in time. But that was the date he turned in a full packet? Seller's permit and the whole bit? Everything?
Whatever, whatever he's saying he turned in, it would have been turned in on that date.
And you have no lost documents in there, except for the business application?
The only thing we were missing is the business license.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have a copy of your registration application?
A complete copy of everything? No, sir, I did not.
Well, no, that wasn't my question. My question, did you have a copy of the business of the registration application? Not the business license, the registration?
Once again, I'm not Mr. Documentation. And so, yes, I feel like I had everything. If you need me to, I have copies at my house of stuff that I did fill out. The one thing that I did not get a copy of is the business license. Because once I turned it in, I believe, whoever took it definitely said, "It's okay, don't worry about it. We have it." And so at that point, I was just relieved to get it in. And that's...
And that was when you were submitting your entire package? You asked him specifically about the business license? Application?
I can't, I can't honestly say that it was just about the business license. It was more so about the entire packet. Or, at that point, like I said, I was exhausted, and I was tired.
Okay.
Did they have a checkoff list of any sort that they were following?
The county, no. My lawyer, yes.
No. Well, your lawyer wasn't with you at that time.
My lawyer was not with me while I was turning it in. But before turning it in, I definitely went and I sat down with my lawyer. He went through my entire packet and said, "Yes, this is approved to be turned in." When I came and I sat in front of Scott, he said, "Yes, this all looks good." And at that point, that's when I started to breathe a little easy.
That was the June date?
That was the June date, correct?
28th or 27th?
Um, that was the 28th, the 27th, 28th is actually was when I was spoke to him.
At that point, were they just, was that during the rush that they were just receiving it?
Oh, it was, it was chaos.
But, but the rest of the question is, did you then, did they then say, "Come back and we'll review this again"? Or was this during such a rush that it was just...
Oh, Scott signed off on it and said, "Thank you, this looks great."
And that was on the 28th, correct?
Yes.
Well, the business license wasn't due until September 7th. So it would have been okay, your application would have been okay without the business license in that packet.
Okay. I can only agree with you. I...
Mr. Clark, were you his attorney at that time?
Yes.
As his representative and his attorney, did you make a copy of that package before you told him to submit it? If you reviewed it?
No. We reviewed it to make sure that everything was there, but we would not have made a note of the business license one way or the other. Because it was not due till September 7th.
And you had a checklist you were performing for him?
Yes, and the checklist came through complete. But like I said, it would not have included a business license one way or the other.
That makes sense. Okay. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to have further discussion before we read the recommendation?
I think we normally discuss it first, don't we?
Yeah, I'm ready. We'll start with you, Commissioner Patelis.
I'll start for a change. We had a similar situation, I think it's a similar situation this morning, with the, where the application was, questions whether it was submitted or not. Several of us thought it had not been submitted, and some said, "Yes." My own situation was, I felt the delay after the deadline of six, eight, nine months put the whole claim of them submitting it in question. So I didn't go along with it. But I, this is different. It's such a minor part of the whole package, which is the part that bothers me the most, to have it denied because of that. And he doesn't even find out about it until February. Way past the September 7th date, which is, that's just the way the procedure works. I'm not criticizing anybody. And as soon as he found out, he then went out and got the application done. So, I believe his story...
Which one? Excuse me.
It did change. It's kind of the old story about witnesses. You just see a traffic accident, and I dare you to try to get them all to tell you the same color of the cars or people. Our memories are not what we, they're certainly not, at my age, they're worthless. But in younger ages, you still don't remember what you think you remember accurately. The fact that the business license application goes from the one office directly to the planning department, I think we've actually been able to show was probably correct. I think it's a valid argument by him. I don't like Mr. Clark's arguments. I really don't. But that's just between you and me. In terms of your client, I think it's a valid position. And I'm, at this point at least, inclined to go against the planning department.
Like, I'm sorry for interrupting you.
Maybe the second time, I'm not sure it's the first.
I'm, I am really troubled by the fact that we have, we have two scenarios here. One, he goes to the tax collector. He gets the form. He takes it over to the planning department. He turns it in. The planning department tells him, "Oh, I can't, we can't make a copy right now. The copy, the copier is broken." He could have gone to the building department and gotten a copy. He could have taken a copy with his phone, whatever. That's one scenario. The second scenario, if I understand it, is that he turned this in as a part of the package on June 28th, as a part of the entire package. Which in case, in that case, it would have been scanned by the planning department. And I don't know any reason why one document would be lost from that scanning of those, of that entire packet. I, you can't have it both ways. And I think if he'd followed all the instructions on the, on the printed form, he would have gotten a sign off from the assessor. That's not essential for the planning department. They can't, they can't get it. But it is a proof that it existed. And, and there is no record from the tax assessor's office that it existed. So I'm, I'm ready to vote to affirm this appeal.
Is it too late for me to ask a point of factual question? You said something I didn't realize, didn't think about, the scanning. Does the planning department scan that application, the date it's turned in, on June or whatever?
It wasn't scanned immediately, but they were all scanned as soon as we could after the registration period ended. So probably over the next month or so, they were all scanned.
And there's no business license application?
There was, there was none in the scanned documents.
I have an issue with the two dates. He says he turned in his complete application on the 28th, which I believe he did. He turned in his complete application on 28th. I don't think this form was part of that application. It wasn't due till September 7th. He said he went to the office, got the papers he needed, and then turned them in. I think there was two different dates, and I think that this one was missed.
Well, I think that had he followed the instructions, the assessor's office would have given him a questionnaire. And the questionnaire would have proven that he went and got the business license application, and then likely turned it in. That didn't happen. Understanding that planning was accepting these applications directly, without going through the assessor's office, still, in the normal course of business, there should have been a copy of that application in that submittal. It seems to me fairly clear that he's saying that he turned it in at the same time with the packet, with his registration application, all of which we have, but there is no business license application. I did not hear from Mr. Clark that he saw that business application in the packet when his office reviewed it. It wasn't due until September 7th. So it didn't have to be in there. And so, I've got to think that this fell through the cracks, but it fell through the cracks because of the applicant's failure to get it to planning. So I'm inclined to deny the appeal.
Okay.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution 2017-020, denying appeal number 2016-534, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-520.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, I've got two motions in a second. So let's take one motion, you're taking Commissioner Wooster's. Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, four one. You want to read the appeals?
So the denial is upheld, and the, this action is final. Unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors, it's been 15 calendar days from today's date.
Okay, moving on to appeal, item number seven. Appeal by Sarah Hodson of the planning director's denial of commercial cannabis. Paul, you're also representing, presenting this one?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, I just want to, there's a lot of new people that came into the room. We're kind of holding tight to procedures today. We're doing 15 minutes for each presenter. And then we'll do public comment and rebuttal. Public comment is limited to three minutes today. So I just wanted to remind everybody that before Paul gets started. Thank you.
So, appeal number 2016-804. Sarah Hodson is appealing a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. Object description and appeal of denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. The registration was denied for the following reasons. The registrant engaged in grading and earthmoving on the parcel after May 10th, 2016 for the purpose of expanding cultivation area. The second reason is the cultivation area was not secured by continuous fencing. And the final reason is, the registrant failed to comply with local rules and regulations. Site location, this is 20.66 acres, and it's located approximately one and a half miles west-southwest at the intersection of Shee Branch Road and Black Forks Road. That's out by Mineral Mountain. It's in Township Four North, Range 14 East, and it's in section 30. This is also registry number two. On June 30th, 2016, Sarah Hodson filed for commercial cannabis cultivation registration for 22,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation area. She was granted an application pending registration for that amount and that type. The first reason for denial is the failure to meet County Code Section 1795-165 and 7. And that states that as of May 10th, 2016, all grading earth movement in portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation shall have been completed other than that grading necessary for proportional adjustment to the cultivation area to comply with the setback requirements of this chapter. A registrant seeking to conduct grading beyond, seeking to conduct grading for this purpose beyond May 10th must provide the planning department with a copy of a current grading permit for this proportional adjustment at the time of submitting their application for registration. No additional grading or earth movement for the purpose of establishing or expanding a commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, 2016. The registrant, let me see here. The registrant acquired the property and had a cultivation going in 2015. And what you see up there on the screen is what was cultivated in 2015. going in 2015, and what you see up there on the screen is what was cultivated in 2015. There's 2,860 square feet of cultivation shown here, and that's just measuring around the cultivation areas individually. You add those all together, and you get 2,860 square feet of cultivation. The cultivation was graded into a number of terraces, there's the lower terrace area down here, and the upper northeast terrace is over here. You can see, I want to point out, this area which has not been graded yet, follow the little triangular shape you see here, and then you see like this big shoulder here, and a big shoulder there on either side of those existing terraces. So this was the state of the site as of May, excuse me, October 10th, excuse me, October 5th, 2015. If we go on up to May 1st, 2016, you can see that it's still in the same state, it's still the same footprint of graded area right here. Again, you're 2,860 square feet of cultivation area, the lower terrace and the upper northeast terrace. Now, the appellant in 2016 decided to expand the cultivation area. Somewhere around, I believe it was, at May 1st, they began, actually, May 2nd, they began grading out here again. And what they did is they went up here and they started constructing a new graded pad. Let me move to the next slide here. There was a new flat pad that they began grading up here, and that grading occurred, that grading of this area was occurring between, I believe, May 2nd and May 10th. At May 10th, the appellant learned when the urgency ordinance was passed, that there was no grading allowed closer, excuse me, no cultivation allowed closer than 75 feet to the property line. Having learned that, and knowing of the option for proportional adjustment, and thinking that the upper northeast terrace and all of the new flat pad area was within the setback area, they decided to move their grading down to this portion of the site down here, and grade down here to expand the cultivation area. So this area down here was expanded, you can see these shoulders, well, the one up here was totally eliminated, the one down there was reduced by a big stretch, this all moved over into this area. Let's go forward. As I said, the appellant made these adjustments with the idea of doing a proportional adjustment as is allowable under the urgency ordinance for any areas that exist within the setback area. Now, this is a, one of the two plot plans that the applicant submitted. Here you'll see this whole area, the whole shaded area right here. Shaded area is that, is the area that is discontinued this year, and it is also the area that they are taking out of the setback. So part of this was within the setback. This, I think, is diagrammatic, I believe that's your northeast terrace right there. So you can see this area that is not in the setback was actually, they planned on moving, simply to abandon that and move that grow area down to the bottom. The stippled area you see right there is the new area put into use, and as you can see, in, at the aerials, that was actually the area that expanded down on this corner of the terraces. This was the second plot plan they submitted, and it's basically outlines the same material that the first one did. Right here, they noted that new grading on that upper terrace was started on May 2nd, and then they moved that down to here, when they learned about the setback area. Let's see, forward. The appellant actually has provided us with a topographic survey that was executed by Cal State Indiana, and this reflects as graded fill conditions on March 21st, 2017. Let's go to an enlargement of this area, which is actually your graded pad. There we are. This is an enlargement of the previous slide, and first of all, I want to point out the property line up here, there's your 75-foot setback. The northeast terrace, which is over here, as you can see, is completely outside of the 75-foot setback. As such, it is not eligible for the proportional adjustment. The new graded pad that they were developing from May 2nd on up to May 10th, I have outlined this area here, you can see that the topo intervals here are much more flattened out when doing this, I assume that was the area they were talking about as far as expanding a new flat pad, assuming that occurred before May 10th, I would think that would be an allowable proportional adjustment. Down below here, you see the 20,000-square-foot cultivation area that was developed. So if we do the math on this, the whole cultivation area of the 2015 season was 9,860 square feet. If we add in the proportional adjustment for the new flat pad area that was developed between May 2nd and May 10th, which was 2,500 square feet, we come up with a total allowable cultivation area for 2016 of 12,360 square feet. The expanded cultivation area was actually, for 2016, was actually 20,000 square feet of canopy area. Subtracting the allowable of 12,360 square feet, that means a net non-allowable expansion of 7,640 square feet.
I think it would be, help to clarify things if I interrupt you right here.
Go for it.
The, that total allowable cultivation area for 2016, did that include the northeast pad that she had added?
You know, you caught me there, yeah, that actually does. And there was, there is actually, I believe, 3,400 square feet up there that I really should have taken out. So, yeah, that north, that, the cultivation area of 2015, that number you're seeing right there did include that northeast terrace. So, and that was approximately, I believe, 3,300, 3,400.
Why wouldn't you count that if that was area she was previously cultivating on as her square footage?
I don't have a good answer to that.
So I think it would stay, like you did it originally in my mind.
Pardon?
Wouldn't it stay?
Wouldn't what stay?
As previous area being cultivated. Wouldn't that stay?
Uh, no, not, no, you can't really move that. I mean, you can't move it into a new cultivation area.
But it was area she was cultivating.
I'm sorry?
But it was area she was cultivating.
It was area that she was cultivating.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay.
What we're, one question I'm going to be asking, I don't need to ask it right now, I don't want, but is, if, if she had been right, and all of the upper areas were within the 75-foot setback.
Right.
When you take that area, is it less, the total of those two areas that were up at the top, is that, how does that compare with the amount she had added down below? Is it more or less?
Oh, she, that's quite a bit less to what she added down here.
The, the combination of the flat pad?
The combination of those two.
And the other.
Yeah. That's 2,500 square feet, this is approximately, I would say, 3,300, 3,400 square feet. What does that give you, that's going to give you?
And she added how much more down below?
I think we had 7,000, 7,640 net.
So it's a thousand or so square feet left?
No, it's actually, the, 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 the expansion is, I would say, at least 7,640 square feet. Because even if you included the northeast terrace, the 2,000, let's include the whole thing, so that's 9,860 square feet. The, you get to add 2,500 square feet to that for the development, the grading they did on that new flat pad, that gives you the 12,360 square feet. Now, what they totally cultivated, the whole canopy area for the 2016 season, was 20,000 square feet. So if we simply subtracted that, which we're doing here, off of the 20,000 that they actually grew, that was 7,640 square feet of non-allowable expansion.
And that number actually? Whether or not the northeast thing was within the 75?
This would be, this would be the most liberal number. I mean, this number would go from 7,640 on up to, if you add 3,300 square feet right here, you're getting up close to 11,000 square feet. All right, any other questions on that right now?
There is, but I have a lot to say for later.
Okay, very good. The second reason for denial here was the fencing, secure cultivation area, and that is, that is part of county code section 1795-165 and 10, and that reads, outdoor mixed-lite cultivation area shall be fully enclosed by a six-foot tall fence of a material of strength that reasonably prevents access by trespassers and children. Access to the cultivation area shall be secured by a lock of reasonable strength to prevent against access by trespassers and children. Code compliance did an inspection out on the site on January 12th, 2017. At that time, it was noted the cultivation area was not continuously fenced or provided with gates and locks. The registrant was advised that fencing was required, but did not be, was not necessary to have it completed immediately. I believe that was given, was told to the registrant by code, because about that time, we, the board was considering the extension of the urgency ordinance. So things were a little bit in limbo right there, and I believe that was the reason why that instruction was given to the appellant. However, it is a requirement that the area be fenced. The registrant in their appeal letter stated they purchased materials and started construction during the growing season, and that would have been 2016. They got started on it in 2016, the appeal letter also states that there was no fencing on the eastern side of the terrace because of the terracing, and there was no fencing along the bottom terrace because the fill would not support the post. So the appellant, in essence, admits that there was not continuous fencing out on the site in 2016. Subsequent code inspections on May 23rd, 2017, did find that the registrant had at that time properly fenced the site, but however, for most of that, the majority of that time up until 2017, the site wasn't completely fenced or secured, so it failed to meet the requirements of section 1795-165 and 10. Final cause for the denial is it fails to meet the requirements of section 1795-165 F, and that is compliance with all federal, state, and local laws, statutes, laws, regulations, including but not limited to the provisions of chapter 17, and all ordinances that apply within the county's jurisdictional boundaries. A little background, on March 15th, 2015, Ms. Hodson's offer to purchase the property was accepted with a one-year option. On July 7th, 2015, complaint was received by code compliance of people living on the property, camping, there was no well or septic. At that time, code compliance opened an active code case. Short time later, on August 19th, a notice of violation was issued to the actual owner, Babish, illegal company, no septic. That notice was passed on to Ms. Hodson. On September 21st, she came in and met with code compliance and told code compliance she planned to build on the property, she needed to get an easement for access, and she desired to come into compliance with the regulations. A long time passes between September 21st and January 9th, evidently those things haven't happened, and on January 9th, code sends a recommendation for denial to the planning department, it's on public nuisance, illegal camping, prohibited access rating without a permit. A few days later, on January 12th, code actually went out and did a compliance inspection. They found grading, hoop houses, tents and structures, unhoused generators, hazardous electrical conditions, discharge of waste onto ground, and no complete fence at that time. I'd just like to run through some photographs of what was going on out there. This was camping on August 5th, obviously, 2015. Well, she got there. Moving on to May 24th, 2016, you can see there's still camping occurring on the site. This is grading on May 26th, 2016. You can see there was a lot of grading that happened out here. That piece of equipment, these cuts are anywhere from eight to 10 feet tall, there's a number of them. That's a close-up, this is moving a little further away, and if you move all the way out, you'll see that big bucket is right over here, and it's a small dot, and that's your excavation on the site. Moving on to the inspection of January 12th, again, we had camping, we had illegal waste, there's a toilet, there's a shower, there was also a laboratory on the site, an unhoused generator, which is code violation, hazardous electrical, and an unpermitted structure, among other things. This is what became of those graded terraces once the rain hit them. This is January 12th, again, in 2017. The big rains actually came next month, in February and March, so this is not a true representation of what actually happened out there. From January 2017 up until May 2017, the appellant began medicate, mitigation of the issues raised by code, both the active code case and the code inspection issues. By January 23rd, the appellant had actually corrected within the 10-day period.
I think you mean May 23rd.
No, I mean January 23rd.
Oh, okay.
January, but within the 10-day period for those violations that she was supposed to have mitigated, she did almost all of those, with the exception of the grading and the fencing by January 23rd. Another inspection on May 23rd found that the fencing and the lock gates had been installed on the site, it was completely fenced and locked. On May 30th, the mitigation efforts were completed in terms of meeting the requirements of closing the active code case, and that was closed out. Regardless of that, basically from September 2015 on up until January 2017, we had ongoing violations of the local laws, and for that reason, we have to fulfill the needs and requirements of 1795-165. And that's it. Code is here to give an explanation of the code case, I don't know if you would like to hear from them now or?
I would like to bring them up and let them speak, that way when the appellant comes up to speak, she'll be able to rebuttal any conversations that take place there.
Right, we'll have some questions at the time as well.
Okay, thank you. Come on up, please. Come on up, please.
Courtney Myenhart with Calaveras County Code Compliance. I've been working on this property for a long time, prior to Ms. Hodson purchasing it. So I don't know what you would like to know about the case.
I think, I think where we're at today is, if you can tell us, when the denial letter was sent, or recommendation was sent to the Planning Department in January?
Yep.
How far out of compliance were we? Was there any way to come into compliance and-
So the code case was what I've wanted to go out there for.
Okay.
That was in May. On the January 9th, I submitted the denial. I was told by Planning that I needed to go out and do a site inspection. At that time, I went out and did the site inspection, found that we were still in violation. I would like you to also see that everything that was done was done after that date to come into compliance. And we did finally catch, or did get the, we finally got the case closed.
I think it's highly admirable that you keep at it-
Yeah.
...and that you reached the conclusion where everything was taken care of. Does Code Compliance now recommend the denial of the permit, of the registration-
She-
...on the basis of the fencing that's been cured and the, the former violations of the code that have been cured? Are you-
Yeah. So my, my recommendation would be that it's the grading that's the most concerned. You saw the pictures. I think they pretty much speak for themselves. As far as everything else, Sarah has gone to great expense and great effort to clear up everything.
Thank you.
So the grading's the only thing that's still being worked on, and I know she's hired an engineer to address that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But fencing, locks, the sewage, all of that, everything's been taken care of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not really.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have, I think they have a question for you.
Is Thomas Watts going to be testifying today?
No.
Then I'll ask you. In one of his letters, he's in your department, right?
Yes.
In a letter he wrote January 23rd, he said additionally, this is to Sarah, additionally, you'll need to install a continuous six-foot fence around the cultivation area with lock gate. Given the current uncertainty regarding the future of commercial cannabis cultivation, the Planning Department is not insisting that this be completed immediately. Is that your understanding of the Planning Department's position for fencing?
Yes.
And that's in January of this year?
Yes. I know that it was supposed to, what we run into a lot is we go out there and they say that they don't want to put up a fence because of the cost if they don't know that they're going to be approved. We tell them that you're not going to be approved without having the fence up. So in order to mitigate all of this, you have to have a fence up.
Well, this says something a little different. It says-
At that time, we were not saying that it had to be completed within the 10 days. We didn't know what was going on, if it was going to be banned.
That, that was when the question was whether the-
Right.
...urgency ordinance was going to be extended, right?
Correct.
There's a time limit in this sentence, so, all right.
Yeah.
I have some more questions for Chair Hartman.
Thank you.
Did the registrant have a grading permit for her post-5, 10, 2016 grading?
No, there was, there was no grading permit submitted with the application.
I'm, no, I'm, okay. But there was no grading permit-
To date, there is still not-
She did-
She has made an application.
Yeah.
But my understanding, and she can correct me if I'm wrong here, is to date, today, there is no approved grading permit.
And the, as far as the grading goes, so the grading that she did do in 2016 was without a permit.
And, yes, and the grading in 2015.
The grade, and the current grading activities, as far as, the 2017 activities, which I understand are meant to be remedial because of erosion and this sort of thing, they're not a basis of your, your current denial of this.
No, the, the, right here, I think I was just looking at the grading as far as the expansion in the first complaint.
Okay.
Right.
There's so much paper having to do with what's going on now.
We have yet to deny, I believe, a project based upon simply a grading or lack of grading permit.
Okay.
If, if, I don't know if you'd want to address that at all.
No, let's stay on task today because we've got too much going on to get sidetracked with that.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we have a lot ahead of us.
It's all good.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Please. Ms. Hodson, do you want to come up? Nope. You want more questions?
I have more questions for planning.
I said I'm in a hurry.
I know you're in a hurry. But I do believe, I have a real question as to having the grounds of fencing and the 2015 Code Compliance case be a part of this denial, in that even though Code Compliance did not include fencing in its list on the 112 inspection, and then said it didn't have to be done completely immediately, registrant did have a completed continuous fence with a lock gate by the time of the 523 inspection. If the county was going to deny registration based of lack of fencing in 2016, why did it require a registrant to undergo the cost of fencing in 2017, fencing which Code Compliance has eventually found to be sufficient? I think we've had at least one other case where the state of fencing, as of the time of the last Code Compliance inspection, was determined of the appeal. I don't quite understand why we put her through the hoops of building these fences and then deny her for what was in existence before she built the fences.
My understanding is that there, there was never continuous fencing with locks and gates on the site. That was, that was required as of June 30th.
Oh, I understand.
You know, so, and, and I commend Sarah for the effort she's made in mitigating everything out there. I mean, many, many things. Everything is not totally mitigated, but it's, it is a requirement that there be continuous fencing, period. Whether it has been mitigated or not, at this point it is, it's still occurred on the site, as did all of those Code Compliance issues.
But why didn't we, why wasn't the recommendation from Code Compliance on January, whatever it was, 9th or 12th, why wasn't that just accepted and, and, and just denied the, the application on, that was as to the Code Compliance things? But as to the fencing, the same, same, it seems to me that it's, it's totally unproductive for the county or the applicant for us to say, "You must have fencing, you must have fencing," and then when you do have fencing, well, you can say, "Well, you're not going to carry on any of the business that you required the fencing for because we're going to deny you because of what was happening before the fencing." I don't understand the policy reasons behind this approach.
I, I can't explain that, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't, I don't set policy. So I-
I look to the Planning Director.
So I'm not sure exactly when the fencing was finally completed. This was denied based on a recommendation from Code Compliance, as well as other reasons, because back in March, I believe it was, they had been given opportunity to correct the situation they hadn't yet at that point in time. After it was denied is when Ms. Hodson proceeded to come into compliance.
Yeah, I, I, sir, when, when was the denial?
March.
Oh, the denial was March, but there was still another inspection?
There was-
And maybe Paul can correct me as far as the dates. When was the fencing completed?
I don't know the exact date. I know that it, Mr. Myenhart's report from, was it May or March 22nd, actually shows that the fencing was completed, 22nd.
My, my, my understanding is, from Code Compliance, the statements made today, is that they are mainly concerned about the grading, not the fencing and the previous compliance questions. And I'm, I also have great concerns about the grading, but I, I think we're, I think we're spinning everybody's wheels by denying on the basis of fencing. But apart, I, I-
Well, there was, I, I mean, all through the 2016 season-
I understand.
...there was no continuous fencing out there.
I understand, so-
It, it's definitely your choice whether, you know, you accept the mitigation efforts, obviously, and choose not to uphold that portion of-
Can we have Mr. Mitter answer the question to the code fence?
It was built after the denial.
Yeah, the fence is built after the denial.
After the denial.
Yeah.
So again, Courtney from Calaveras County Code Compliance. The fence was completed sometime before my May 23rd inspection. Most of this was not done until I gave my denial to Planning. That was when all of the engineering was done. That was when the fence was started on.
Is this the January denial?
Yes.
January recommendation, okay.
Yeah. So if you look in, you ask when certain things were done, most of my records show everything was done after the January 9th, which is when I submitted the, the denial, and she was notified of my denial request.
But that's not the denial letter from the Planning Department.
Correct. That was, that was, right. My recommendation for denial.
I do have some questions of Mr. Grove.
Yes, sir.
In the file, there's a, a message from a Mark Smith, operator of So Digging Excavation. This came in after we received the packet. And he was the fellow who was hired to do the excavating after, starting on May 2.
Right.
He did the excavating, the grading, starting on May 2nd of 2016.
That's my understanding.
And he says that as of May 10th, the site, which I take it to mean the entire site, was just over 22,000 square feet as of May 10th. Do you have any information as to whether that's correct or not?
I don't have any information as to whether that's correct or not. And in terms of defining areas, I don't know if that is 22,000 square feet of what he, you know, whether that was what he's claiming to be, maybe the new pad area or the expansion down on the lower terrace. I don't know what that is in regards to-
It just says the site, which I take it to be everything that was graded on the site.
Yeah. I, that's indeterminate to me.
Okay. Whatever was graded as of May 10th would include the upper northeast terrace, correct?
My understanding was that they were only, and Ms. Hodson can correct me here if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that they were only grading on that new upper terrace between May 2nd and May 10th. In that area, they were planning the expansion in that area. Then they found out about the 75-foot setback in full fact.
But the northeast terrace was actually cultivated prior to May 10th, right?
The, it was cultivated in 2015. Yes, sir.
Right. Okay. So in terms of the total area, area that was either graded for cultivation or cultivated, as of May 10th, it would include the upper northeast terrace, right?
Yes, that was graded and cultivated prior to that.
It would also include the new flat pad.
That portion of the flat pad within the 75-foot setback.
Well, it would include the whole flat pad in terms of what was actually graded or cultivated as of May 10th.
Up to May 10th?
Right.
Okay.
And it would include the lower terraces that had previously been cultivated?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, do we have information as to what was contained in terms of square footage on each of those? I think you suggested that the upper northeast terrace, you would estimate at 3,300 to 3,400?
That is the, yes, the canopy area that I mentioned there.
Okay. What about the new flat pad, the entirety of it?
Um, let me go back and look at this. The entirety of it, you know, I'm not sure, and this is where, it's, it can be rather, rather subjective here. You can see the flattened topographic areas right in here. That was area that I looked at and said, "That is conceivably flat enough to set your plots out and grow on," whereas down here below where the contourable, contour intervals get closer together, that becomes much steeper. So the flat areas, like you see down on the terrace, very similar up here. So when I look at this, that's what I see as cultivation area right there.
And is that the 2,500 square feet?
That's the 20, what I am saying is 2,500 square feet right there. Now, I, I mean, if you wanted to say the whole of the flat pad area, that was graded between May 2nd and May 10th, you might want to extend that out to include this portion here. You can see that coming across here.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to get at is, what was the total amount of square footage that she had either graded or cultivated by May 10th? And you've, we got the figure for the northeast terrace, now the flat pad would be how much?
Uh, this new flat pad was the 2,500 square feet. And as I showed in, let's go back. Originally, we were at 9,860 square feet of canopy area. Now, that's not the area of those terraces. That's the area where they actually put the plants and they grew into mature cannabis. Two different things, right?
But I'm looking for the area, not just where they planted before, but which, which was graded and capable of being planted.
I can't tell you that because from the aerial, you can't necessarily tell the whole flat area. I mean, I could make some assumptions, and I didn't measure that, so to answer you right now, I would be assuming a great deal.
But you know it's at least 2,500.
At least 2,500 in the new flat pad.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, the lower terrace area that was either being cultivated or graded for cultivation by May 10th, not talking about the, the grading and terracing done after May 10th, up to May 10th, how much, what square footage would that be?
That would be all of this down here. It would be this whole area that had been graded. Now, whether it could all be used for cultivation, I would say not because it was terraced. So you have spaces that are making up the grade change, so I would say that whole area could not be. And, again, subjectively, but applying some common sense to the commentary here, I am just assuming that she actually planted out the terraces as much as she could in 2015. Whatever she had developed here as far as planting areas, I assume she cultivated that year. I mean, but again, that's very subjective. I, I, you know, that's all I can say about it. And again, you know, you're terracing below the terraces or fills. Those are fill, that's a fill area down there. Again, there's a transition between each of these terraces. There is unusable slope, fill, so on and so forth, in between each of those rows on your terrace.
I, I think the issue is, is that in the beginning, you started adding totaling, deducting, and saying, "This is what it should be." And we're sitting here looking at it differently than you, and now when we ask for those totals, you say it would be subjective. So personally, I would like to say I never seen that portion of that presentation, and I don't know what those square footages meant or were about because it confused him. He's confused. I was confused. So if we could just forget we seen that little picture, we could move this hearing forward.
Well, except we, we need to, we need to figure out whether she added cultivation area in 2016.
Well, that is, that we already know, based on her letters, her statements, and her engineers. So I think we could have her at the mic and tell us what she did, what she didn't do, when she did it, and that will keep us moving in a forward direction because we still have a whole lot of hearings to go, and the Planning Department doesn't buy you dinner.
Let me try to speed it up a little bit because I'm not quite done yet.
Okay. That's good.
Okay. In, in Ms. Hodson's appeal, she says her growing area earlier, as of March of 2016, was about 12,000 to 15,000 square feet. So how- So how confident are you of your estimate of 9,860?
I'm very confident, I mean, I use the tools that we have as far as measuring on our aerials, our aerial photography, our county aerial photography. I can actually give you the, I have a copy. I have the original actually in my file here showing how I measured out each of those terraces and, you know, the area was, the computer told me was within each of those terraces.
I think it's important to note that there's sort of different things we're measuring here. What Paul has measured is canopy area.
Right.
And part of what the ordinance allows is the disturbed area, the graded area. So if it was previously graded or previously disturbed, that's what could be used. It may not, may be that not all of that area can be used because of the cut bank and fill areas and those kind of things. But, you know, if, if an area had been disturbed up until May 10, then that entire area could be used for cultivation. What we didn't want was additional disturbance beyond that date except for the proportional change from any area within the 75-foot setback. And so whether or not it was 9,000 square feet or 12,000 square feet, depends what you're measuring. Paul measured the actual canopy. It sounds like Ms. Hodgson measured the graded area, which would appear to correlate with what we have up there at that time.
And what I'm trying, was trying to get at is, if for appeal were granted, what would be the total allowable cultivation area based on what she had graded for cultivation prior to May 10 or cultivated, adding those two together? That's the number I was trying to get at. And I don't think we're there yet, but let's go ahead with the rest of it. I don't have any more questions at this time.
Okay, so it's 3:25. This would be a good time to take a break before we let the next ones, the presentations begin. Let's just take a 10-minute break and come back at 3:35. Silva case? Is there anybody here for Silva? Okay, then we will not be doing that because he is not here or representation. So we will continue with the Hodgson case. And we will see you at around 6:30-ish. Okay, thank you.
6:30?
No, 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 sir. I'm sorry for the confusion. Okay, so I'm going to close Silva back up and we're going to go back to opening Hodgson and continue with you coming up to do your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to request that I can bring Sean Wood, who works for me and has for three years and is very technological and has prepared a PowerPoint with further explanation. Is that okay?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we need to limit his time. We don't want to go on for too, okay, thank you. And I want to do, to say also that the presentation from staff went way over 15 minutes. So we'll be a little flexible with you.
Thank you for that.
Do I have packets?
Can you hand them to Annette, please?
I prepared a little introduction, so I'll just read that while they're getting that figured out so that I don't waste your time.
Perfect, thank you.
So, hi, my name is Sarah Hodgson. I am from Mountain Ranch. I was born and raised in Calvers County. Graduated from Calvers High School and returned here after college to begin building my life here. And I'm here to discuss the circumstances of my denial. I'm not a good public speaker, so I'm just going to read. But feel free to ask me any questions and Sean knows everything about all of it as well. I want to start by thanking the planning commission for your consideration. And this process has been a learning experience for me. I have been learning better ways to proceed in my operation and become compliant and become a compliant and validated cultivator. I have throughout tried to maintain open and honest dialogue with the county officials. I know the county has been overburdened by many current circumstances as well. And I would, I would like to commend the county staff for the tough job that they do on a daily basis. I hope that you will look at my situation and circumstances in its entirety before making a judgment on my denial. I believe that my application was denied because of violations that stem from procedural and logical inconsistencies in the direction I was given from the county. I feel I was given unclear and conflicting requirements and timelines and information regarding the appropriate action I needed to take to become fully compliant and had conflicting information with the numbers of the grading, which I will further explain in a minute. I acted in good faith in accordance with the direction I was given by the county at each instance, and I've given my full effort to being completely compliant. And despite my best efforts, the lack of procedural consistency created a situation that has made it impossible for me to become compliant. I believe there's an existing precedent in place for granting my appeal. My case is very similar to that of Greg Stapleton, which this very board unanimously voted to grant the appeal for a few reasons. One was because the county had not developed and communicated clear guidelines regarding hoop houses. And two, because the county had not communicated clearly in writing the expectations set forth for him. He was never given clear direction of how he was supposed to come into compliance. And my case is fundamentally consistent with these issues. I feel that I too was denied for reasons stemming from lack of clear guidelines and because of unclear and conflicting information, which I will elaborate on in my presentation.
We had planned to start with the fence. We're happy to answer any questions about it, but because of the issues that planning raised, we'd like to start with the grading. So I'll skip through some files here. Okay, so we were cited under 17.95.165.n.d.7 for grading after May 10. So the county asserts that we only had 2,500 square feet allowable for a proportional adjustment after May 10. We had begun grading on the property prior to May 10. And we had expanded the total square footage of the garden to 22,000 square feet prior to the installation of the UO. And then after the UO happened, we had to move some, some area, obviously. Now, they say it's 2,500 square feet. But we believe, we believe that there are some areas that they did not include in that number. For one, they made assumptions about the cultivatable area based on the topography just because of the flat pad at the top. They only assumed that we were going to use the little 2,500-square-foot area. However, that, that whole square footage on that side, outside of the 75-foot setback, it was cultivatable space and it had been planned to be used. So Cal State Engineering, who did the site analysis that they used, and an email from them, which you can see in Exhibit E in the packets that I gave you, they state that the total space inside of the 75-foot setback on the northwest side, which is where that pad is, is actually 9,390 square feet. The county also didn't include an area on the bottom of the property that was cultivatable space and we had planned to use it for cultivatable space, which also falls within the 75-foot setback. So with those two totals together, we had figured that there was a 13,390-square-foot proportional adjustment that would have been allowed under the UO.
Can you show, do you have slides that'll show us which areas you were talking about at any particular time?
Sure, I do. If you want to look, there is in your packet, and I don't have the exhibit on top of my head. There is a blow-up map of the insert map from the survey that shows the lower area on the property. Now, the 75-foot setback lines are mine, I inserted them. But it clearly shows it, it's within the 75-foot setback. And I do have. Okay, may I use your laser pointer? Is it possible?
You're saying there was a 75-foot setback problem at the lower part of the property?
In addition, yeah, there was also grow space on the bottom. We have photographic evidence in this that, with dirt and pots, that shows that we had intended to cultivate that area prior to the May 10 installation of the UO. So the county asserted that this area right here, basically, like only this area, should be counted in the setback. However, this entire area is cultivatable. And also in your packet is a map that Sarah turned in in her application that has marked out this entire spot as area that was abandoned because of the setback.
She also shows the upper northeast terrace is abandoned. And if anything, there was just a little bit of the grading of that terrace that was within the 75-foot.
That's true. So the property line.
I can explain this one, maybe?
Sure.
Okay, so the reason that I had marked that was because I was trying my hardest to make sure to be completely away from the 75-foot setback line. And at the time of May 10, when the ordinance occurred, I did not have 100% clear understanding of where the property line was. So I made my best guess based off the evidence that I had, which was from a, an exploratory survey job that was done, and not an official one. And the property corner pins had been possibly found, but the last survey done of the property was in 1919. And in that survey, it said that the corner pins of the property were four-inch square pine posts in a rock mound. And so looking for those in a thicket of menzanita was a little bit inconclusive, to say the least. We found some iron pipings in approximate areas where the corner pins were. And then later found 100 feet away from the same corner, a different pin for that corner. And so it was impossible to know exactly where those corner pins were at that time. I had hired Acorn Surveying, I had begun a project with Acorn Surveying to come give me a full official survey of the property, which did eventually happen and get turned in, I think, late August of 2016. But at that time of May 10, it was still unknown. So I made my best guess and I was acting in good faith, trying to stay as far away from getting myself out of compliance as possible. So I believed at that time that that terrace was. And I didn't know until I got the recent Cal State Engineering topographical that that was not even, that it was just outside of that. So that's, that's the, what happened there.
Do you have any more questions about the map? Because I'm going to go back. I can't.
You can tell we're struggling with, was more property graded than permissible?
Absolutely.
And.
Hope to make that clear.
And taking in, even if you take into consideration the abandonment of the northeast terrace for the reasons you just gave, was there more grading done than should have been done?
Yeah, absolutely, I totally understand.
If you can make that clear.
Totally, and the county has said that the number that they were, the original number that they were using was somewhere around 9,860 square feet. So if I go back to the numbers that we received the other day from Cal State Engineering, which you have in an email in the packet, they state that the total square footage that qualified was 9,000 and change in this area, all of that area. And then.
Do that again, please, with your.
Sure, I'm sorry. This whole area here, like that.
Far down are you going?
We had planned, the, this was about the spot of the terrace in the last time? I'm sorry. This was the end of the terrace in 2015 and we had planned to go like down around there.
And was that on a steep terrain at that time? That was not.
I mean, it's, it's not flat. It's definitely not too steep to grow. I've worked on grows that were like a much more significant grade than that area of the garden is. You just put a pallet, a couple 2x4s, it's flat.
And that, then that part was not then graded in 2016 because you thought that was part of the.
Correct, yeah, that, that part. That part was basically this road. I mean, we did grade the upper pad. And then this road is a continuation of that. So this area up here, as she stated in her application, was, was graded prior to May 10.
But if you planted where it had been a road, you would have had to grade a road.
Well, I mean.
We discontinued the use of that left side as a road originally because it was, after this area, it starts to get steeper and wasn't a safe road to be using anyway. And we had the road on the right side. So there was, we, we turned it into grow space and discontinued use as a road prior to May 10.
So yeah, just, I guess to summarize, the Cal State engineer has told us that there's about 13,000 square feet that fall within the setback that's cultivatable and that we had intended to cultivate on. If you add that to the 9,000 and change that the county is saying should be the base number for the setback, then it's well over 22,000 square feet. And our garden is, you know, legal in 22,000 square feet, so.
Have these, has this approach been presented to the planning department?
Well, we weren't aware that the planning department was going to. Do you want to explain?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say. We didn't realize that the planning department had such different numbers based off different observations and, like, sorry, based off of different choices of where they believed that our cultivation space would be. So therefore, when we went in last Thursday to turn in additional documents to the planning department, we received the packet of information that would be presented today and realized that there was a difference in the understanding of everything. So at that point, I immediately called Cal State Engineering and asked for some solid, like, verification of the numbers that I'd been going off of. We didn't receive those until last night after 4:00 PM. And we emailed them to the planning department as soon as we got them. So I, I was hoping they were included in the information you've gotten, but I'm not sure, but we also included them in that packet. It was an email from Cal State Engineering.
The email that is in here says that your original grow area, which includes the upper northeast pad, I believe four terraces and an area within the setback area totaled 19,885 square feet. The current grow areas, including the terraces and the upper northeast pad, are approximately 30,280 square feet.
That, that's just the disturbed earth total of the site. It isn't specifying the grow area and it doesn't delineate between which things were inside or outside of the setback lines. I asked the Cal, I asked Cal State for several different numbers so that I could add a bump and make sure that everything I believed was correct.
This email was sent this morning at 9:54.
Right, okay, so, I'm sorry, wait, I sent that last night.
Last night at 9:54.
Yeah, I sent, I sent it, I received the email from Cal State.
Wednesday at 11:21 AM, but then Sean forwarded it. That's probably what I'm looking at today at 9:54.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at your email.
Oh, I forwarded it to myself so I could print it out at the shop. But that's not.
So, okay, we are already 13 minutes into this presentation. I'm going to ask that we withhold our questions.
Okay. Okay.
I'm going to ask that we hold our questions and allow you to continue with your presentation because if we interrupt it, we're not getting a clear picture of what you want to say.
Okay.
Can you show? Okay.
Do you want to speak or do you want to?
I first, really quick, would like to show the picture of the lower grow space area.
Sarah, I'm going to allow him time to go through this presentation so we can get a better picture of what, we've interrupted you with questions.
Okay.
So I would like to see his presentation.
Okay. May I read?
Our presentation is concurrent, like, it kind of goes back and forth as a single presentation. So yeah, so that is what we have to say about the proportional adjustment. And then Sarah has a statement about the grading in general.
Well, I wanted to show that picture. And I don't know if you explained it, but the lower area on the lower pad was also not included in the proportional adjustment numbers by the county.
There's a blow-up map of that in your packet.
Cal State Engineering has, has confirmed that the total square foot of this area is 8,000 square feet. We weren't planning to use the whole area. We were planning to use about 4,000 of that square feet down at the lower area for light depth and full season up at the top. This is a picture of the lower area with the dirt and the plants there in the corner. I can't point it because I don't have the laser pointer. But this is just in further explanation of additional grow space that was not included in the county's numbers that were calculated for the allowable. for the allowable setback, if that makes sense. So, I'd like to read what I have and then, so that I can not waste any more of your time. Okay, so, this grading began May second, prior to the passage of the urgency ordinance. It was a continuing grading project, or, sorry, it was a continuing project when the UO passed. At the time I initiated the project, it was unclear if grading for cannabis cultivation required a permit or fell under the county's agriculture, agricultural exemption carved out in section fifteen point oh five point zero eight zero of the county code. When the urgency ordinance was adopted, it was unclear how the county was addressing grading done without a permit under the county's agricultural exemption. The grading was done at a time of such fluctuation and confusion that it was impossible to get a clear answer regarding my grading project. Furthermore, the UO also contained language exempting grading done to comply with the seventy-five foot setback rule. It seventeen dot nine five dot one six five says, "As of May tenth, twenty sixteen, all grading and earth movement in the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation shall have complete, been completed other than grading necessary for proportional adjustment to the cultivation area to comply with the setback requirements of this chapter. To the extent that the grading on my property continued after May tenth, it was because of, it was because it was necessary for the proportional adjustment to the cultivation area to comply with the setback requirements of the urgency ordinance. There is also procedural inconsistency in the way that the county has handled this application. I was sent a notice with a list of corrections after my inspection on January twelfth. I was given ten days to fix the violations outlined in the inspection. As of January twentieth, twenty seventeen, the county was aware that I had contracted with Cal State Engineering and was taking the necessary steps to properly repair the grading issues outlined in my ticket. At this time, I was advised by county staff to continue working towards compliance and then furthermore, in Jan, on January twenty-third, an email, I was clearly told that the uncertainty regarding the regulatory program meant that planning was not requiring immediate corrective action and that erosion control efforts would suffice until proper repairs could be made, all of which I have done. The grading, the as-built grading permit was turned into the county as soon as Cal State was finished with it. I began that process as soon as I was made aware that it was needed to be done. I am eager to get started on it as soon as that is approved by the county and that's all it's waiting on at this point. It doesn't make sense for the county to deny my application in April because the grading was an irreparable violation of the May tenth deadline while knowingly encouraging me over the preceding four months to spend thousands of dollars with Cal State Engineering and others to repair the grading as a way of coming into compliance. If the timing of the grading is the basis for denial, there should not have been time granted for, to comply via corrective grading because no amount of corrective grading could correct the violation of the May tenth deadline. This fundamental inconsistency in the underlying logic of my denial and the direction, the directions I have been given by county staff create a significant barrier for people trying to make a good faith effort at compliance. There is also the issue of unclear communication and direction on the part of county staff beyond the logical inconsistency outlined above. In January, I was, I was told that because of the uncertainty in the program, there was no immediate timeframe for coming into compliance. I was never in any subsequent communications giving a clear deadline for when the repairs had to be completed. Furthermore, it is commonplace for the county to allow people the necessary time to complete the engineering component of the project once the county knows competent engineers have been contracted and are overseeing the project. This is how my case was being handled until I was abruptly sent a denial letter in April. The county has not clearly communicated the expectations for compliance in a way that applicants who are making a good faith effort, effort to comply are able to do so. There is also precedent for, uh, there is also a precedent case for granting my appeal. My appeal is very similar to Greg Stapleton, who won his appeal because the county did, had not developed and communicated clear guidelines regarding who passes. In his case, he was not given clear direction from county staff regarding how he was supposed to come into compliance. This issue, uh, the issue is his case being, in this case, being the lack of, of a list of clear direction given to him. In my case, at the time of grading, the county had not communicated clear guidelines regarding the visa v, the ag exemption. Even now, I don't believe there is an official document articulating the county's position regarding grading undertaken prior to the urgency ordinance or in relation to the ag exemption. I have also been given unclear direction from the county staff at, without solid deadlines of when I had to complete the repairs as it pertained to my grading. I was also led to believe I could come into compliance by contracting with Cal State Engineering and to get the as-built grading plans. I was encouraged to continue with my erosion control efforts. Prior to receiving my notice of denial in April, I was not given a clear deadline or warned that I was going to be denied by a certain date for failure to comply. I was told that by contracting with Cal State and implementing erosion control measures, it would be sufficient for coming into compliance. Yet, the reason for denial indicates differently and this was never communicated to me. My case should be treated like every other case involving grading that was initiated prior to the urgency ordinance and falls within the gray areas of the ag exemption and setback exemption in the context, in the context and confusion and lack of clear direction from the county back in May of twenty sixteen. This issue was not clarified at the time I initiated my grading project prior to the adoption of the urgency ordinance. I sought clarification and was not given clear direction at the time and when county provided notice of violation, I did everything I could do to come into compliance. County staff gave me the impression I would be able to come into compliance through erosion control measures and by getting an engineered as-built grading plan for my existing grading. I spent thousands of dollars to comply with the directive from the county officials. If the grounds for denial on the basis of my grading could not be fixed through the measures, county staff never conveyed this to me in writing. Instead, the written correspondence I have indicates that my violations could be corrected. I was told, I was also told that because of the uncertainty of the commercial cannabis cultivation in, in the county with the board's direction to pursue a permanent ordinance banning cultivation, the planning department is not insisting on this being completed immediately. The directive left me without a clear deadline or timeframe for compliance. I've done my best to try to comply with the county's regulations to be a productive member of the community I grew up in. That is, that, I have also a little bit, I've written about the history of code violations and defense, but I know we're getting short on time, so.
It's okay, we're gonna have a lot of questions for you, I'm sure. Why don't we start at that end and work our way around and start getting some clarity?
Okay. I am really confused about how these numbers work. So, let me try to make it simple.
Sure.
Okay, I have an email here that seems to tell me that the upper northeastern terrace is approximately three, three, five, five square feet. Now, is that correct?
Yes. This is the Cal State Engineering email.
Okay, and that was, that was an area that was cultivated in twenty fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you put a flat pad in at the top-
Yes.
And that was completed before May tenth, correct?
Yes.
And this tells me it was seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet. Is that correct?
I don't have those numbers directly in front of me, but if you're looking at the Cal State Engineering, then yes, that is correct.
I'm looking at an email sent, well, sent from you on June fifth, on five twelve, and then it looks like the answers appear on the same thing.
Right.
Okay, now, some of that flat pad qualifies for a proportional adjustment, doesn't it?
Yes.
How much?
Um, the thing, okay, I, I understand why this is confusing. The thing is, a portion of that top flat pad qualifies, but also the space to the west side, so in this picture, the left upper corner, qualify as well for that setback proportional adjustment and they were not included in the county's numbers.
Why does it qualify? Was it graded for cultivation by May tenth?
It was.
As part of the flat pad or not?
Um, the flat pad and the western terrace area. That area was, was, was graded prior to May tenth and was going to be used for cultivation.
So, that's in addition to the, is that included in the seven, eight, five, five figure?
Um, yes. In addition, in, in addition to the top flat pad, correct. Sorry, did I make it more confusing?
It, it may be me.
Okay, it is pretty confusing. I don't blame you.
What I'm trying to figure out is, as of May tenth-
Right.
How much of what you had already either cultivated on or graded for cultivation fell within the seventy-five foot setback?
The total amount that fell within the setback that was, that was graded prior to May tenth was, Sean has the number on there. Uh, Sean, thirteen thousand.
The total amount behind the northwest up setback, so this, this line here is nine thousand six hundred square feet, nine thousand six hundred square feet is what, is what the engineering report says. It's, it's highlighted on the email.
But the total number, can you go to that one slide? Um, here it is.
I don't know what slide you're talking about, so.
It's the one that says, uh, the numbers from engineering.
Okay, this, this helps explain. The loss incurred from the northwest seventy-five foot setback, that number nine thousand three hundred and ninety includes the, the portion of the top, the top pad that fell within the seventy-five foot setback. The engineer, when he added up the numbers, included those as one area. So, that number nine thousand three hundred and ninety is the amount of unusable cultivation area lost on the upper northwest area of the property to the northwest of the garden, if that made sense.
And, and that's, has now established by a valid survey?
Yes, exactly. That's the part that, that, not counting my overcorrection for unknown property lines, that's the actual amount that one hundred percent confirmed fell within the seventy-five foot setback area. And then, on top of that, there's the lower pad area of which four thousand square feet was to be used and those numbers together is thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety square feet that qualified for the proportional adjustment, which is different from the county's number because they did not take other areas into account and, and estimated a small amount of the top, of the very top pad to be used for cultivation.
So, okay, for these numbers to make any sense to me, that nine thousand, whatever it is, three hundred and ninety square feet includes part of the new flat pad, I guess, of seven, eight, five, five and a whole bunch of other ground-
Yes.
Which I'm trying to figure out when that got graded-
That was graded-
And for what?
That area was graded prior to May tenth, uh, cause we had expanded the garden to twenty-two thousand feet before May tenth.
You'd expanded to twenty-two thousand?
We had expanded the garden to its full size before May tenth happened. Well, with, including the area in the bottom pad and the area up there, the garden, the cultivation size was twenty-two thousand square feet, yeah.
Prior to, prior to or on May tenth?
That is correct. In, when the state mercer laws came out in September of twenty fifteen, they allowed for that and I had begun preparing for that since that date.
So, that's, that's where you got that, the twenty-two thousand figure?
Yeah, yeah. So, by the time the day hit, it had already been, there had already been area preparing, planning for growing, twenty-two thousand square feet and thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety of it fell within the seventy-five foot setback line.
So, I'm sorry, Sarah, I'm reading your notes here that you submitted with our original package-
Right.
And you are quoting yourself as saying, "I truly honestly believe that because I was already started on the excavation process before May tenth, that I did not need a permit for the new area because it was a continuation of a prog, project already in progress rather than a new project."
Right.
So, you were not done by May tenth and you were continuing to excavate and grade?
I can, I did continue to excavate, excavate after May tenth, but I, I did it for the proportional adjustment. Prior to May tenth, the cul, the excavation I had done was under the ag exemption for the planned expansion of my garden. Once the May tenth deadline hit, I, I understood that a significant portion of my garden was not going to be usable and that we were allowed an exemption and I asked, asked the cul, the excavator to move areas and start adjusting.
At what date did you have, I forgot who you said it was, come out and try to find the pins?
Um, Russ from Acorn Surveying or the, the original attempt to-
The original. When did you find out your property lines were not gonna be consistent with the seventy-five foot setbacks?
I, I knew that, okay, so that surveying work or attempt that we did was done when I first bought the property. And so, there, there's also, if you look at the property lines, there is six hundred feet of straight manzanita. You can't even walk through it, so you have to like create a pathway through the manzanita to find a corner pin, find your way back and then go off to the other one. Like, it takes a couple hours to get to each one and then I tried my best to create and understand where the property line was based off of that. I later had Russ out and then later got the actual survey done with the engineering, like I already said that, sorry, I'm just repeating myself.
So, did you, once Cal State Engineering was able to tell you where your corner markers were-
Mm-hmm.
Did you excavate more based on the seventy-five foot setback?
Um, I didn't know those numbers from Cal State until just a month or two ago, when the grading, um, when that topo by Cal State was created. I li, I literally just got the final word on where that property line was.
So, you did no extra grading afterward? You just now know you have to move your garden because of the property lines?
I knew approximately where the property line was and knew that, I, I knew that I needed to move away from the property line.
Are you now relying on your misapprehension as to the, whether the seventy-five foot back, seventy-five foot setback would outlaw basically your northeast terrace? Are you, are you relying on the square footage of the northeast terrace-
Right, I understand.
-in your adjustments at this point?
I am not-
Or are you saying you don't?
No.
Okay, that, that's really important.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. No, even without that being adjusted for, I still, it's still, the adjustment is still-
Maybe.
Sorry. Yeah, allowable. Yes, thank you.
So, with the, I mean, looking at some of these pictures of the terracing, the runoff, the hay not working, putting, installing the wattles-
Right.
And still seeing a lot of slippage and some mud sliding going on on that hill-
Right.
There's a lot of damage there.
Right. I'd love to-
With, with what Cal State Engineering is proposing in their plans to do the corrective work, are you going to be able to secure those hillsides and use that area again for cultivation?
The area that-
Or are you completely abandoning the terracing?
Um, no, I would, um, okay, so I ha, I would continue to cultivate there once, you know, after the, well, if I'm approved and then after the remediation project. Cal State Engineered, uh, Engineering designed a regrading of the slopes and also gave me a full plan with erosion control techniques, hay bales, wattles. Um, I'm, I've also gotten, um, I've gotten quotes from a hydro seeding company, a erosion control company and I've started working with, um, an environmental company to help me understand exactly what needs to be done because I was unaware of how much needed to, how much more needed to be done than what I had previously done and I've been taking steps continuously to do that, even since, um, uh, the initial hay and wattles. I've gone out there and installed hay bales to begin the remediation project. Mo, most of the remediation project can't be done until the grading happens, like the hydro seeding of the slopes. All of that has to happen after the county approves my, my grading plan to fix the hillside. Um, the, the things that can be done in advance of that would be installing hay in every fifty feet going down the west side there, um, below the cultivation area down to the flat pad at the bottom. That has all been installed. I've also voluntarily decided to sign up with the WQCB for a SWIP, which is a, a huge additional cost, but I believe it's worth it and it, it's basically a weekly monitoring system and they've designed an entire booklet for my property specifically where, with erosion control techniques to help me understand and keep me, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Keep, keep me, keep up with me on my efforts of full remediation. And they will, the SWIP continues until the site is in full remediation and then after that, that project-
So, you've got thirty thousand feet of excavated area that could be considered growing area, but, and, and so, when you were talking earlier, you were talking about using the flat areas that he was discussing-
Right.
-as your square footage.
Right.
But now, you're telling me if they're able to secure those- But now you're telling me if they're able to secure those terraces, that's going to also be your grow site area?
The flat area?
Are you trying to get back to your twenty-two thousand square feet?
I, I, I have twenty-two thousand square feet of usable area currently. And I'm not trying to go within the seventy-five foot setbacks line or use any area other than what I used last year. If that answers your question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the remedial work's not going to add or subtract.
Correct.
To your cultivation area.
Yes, exactly.
The question, it's just to make the hillside more stable.
Yes.
Make it more environmentally sound, et cetera.
Exactly, it's simply to correct the the work that was not, that wasn't done well.
Assuming that we've got the square footage taken care of, which I'm not sure that we have.
Right, understand.
One of the main sticking points that I have is that the part of the ordinance that you were reading about the proportional adjustment, the next sentence says, "The registrant seeking to conduct grading for this purpose beyond May tenth, twenty sixteen, must provide the planning department with a copy of a current grading permit for this proportional adjustment at the time of submitting his or her application for registration." I understand there was no permit for the grading that was done that now requires the remedial work. Am I off base on that?
No, you're, you're, you're correct, there was no permit. Um, I was, I had begun before May second and there was no clear, I had no clear understanding or guideline from the county explaining the way that that was supposed to be done when.
Except for the ordinance.
Well, and I'm not saying that that was unclear in what it was stating, but I began before May second. And it, like what I read earlier, it was, it was unclear.
Well, it's just that, I mean, you learned about the seventy-five foot setback.
Correct.
On May tenth.
Right.
And so any grading after that was clearly for this adjustment for the seventy-five foot setback, which required a permit, and there was none. I have a, I have a very hard time getting past that.
Right, I understand.
The county has given us, in in our inspection notice, the county gave us a period of time to act upon addressing the grading and this whole issue. And they gave us a period of time to apply for an as-built grading permit for for the site.
I'm sorry, they, what was the last date?
They they gave us a period of time to apply for a permit for the site. We have a a letter that was given to us, that was sent on the ninth and then the notice from the inspection three days later on the twelfth.
On of what?
Just of the county telling us like.
No, no, the ninth and twelfth of what?
Oh, of January, I'm sorry.
Okay, but all this grading I'm talking about happened in twenty sixteen without a permit.
That's correct. I guess the point I'm trying to make is the the county has offered, they have allowed us time. They told us in our inspection report that we had ten days to fix issues. And one of the issues citing on there was.
Was it grading on that?
Yeah, grading, grading and the erosion was an issue on the inspection.
I think, I think where the confusion is coming in is that whether you are growing on this property or not, code compliance is still going to enforce fixing that grading issue and the problems that have been created. So they're two separate issues. One is how do you come in compliance with the ordinance? The other one is, no matter what, you still, even if this goes bad, code compliance is still going to stay on your back to correct these issues. So I think that's where the confusion is coming in, at least for me it is. They're not saying if you correct this grading within this amount of time, you're going to be able to comply with the ordinance because the ordinance was already violated. What they're saying is because of the damage that's been done to this land, you have to fix it. This is a major concern for our county with a lot of grading that was done without permits and we're got to go back and hopefully people will fix the damage that's been done. You're not running into any waterways or watersheds, which, thank goodness, right? You don't need added problems. I do have a favor to ask, just so I don't forget later. Is it possible that you could email what you read to Peter?
Yeah.
So that we have it on the record? We would really appreciate that.
Of course, yes.
We don't want to, it'd be easier than us trying to transcribe it and then we have a copy of your, okay, thank you.
Should I email it to Peter directly or to Paul?
Um, either or, it doesn't matter.
Okay, I can definitely do that.
Okay, so we we have, I know you're looking at me, okay, we have a lot more questions. Would you like to continue on? Okay.
Yes. Okay, you had some lower terraces that you were growing on before May tenth.
Correct.
And the email seems to tell me there's each of three middle terraces, and it gives us the square footage, twenty-six thirty, thirty-nine fifty, and five thousand ten for those three. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Then it says the bigger bottom terrace, approximately fifteen thousand three thirty-five, was that existing as of May tenth or did that come later?
The bottom terrace? The one that was fifteen thousand something? Just to clarify, that bottom terrace is the bottom of those terraces that are shown in the majority of these pictures, not the lower area of the property, correct?
It just says.
Okay, the, sorry.
The bigger bottom terrace.
Right.
And this is on top of the three numbers I already read.
Right.
Fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-five. And my question is, does that exist? Was that part of your previous growing area or did that get added after May tenth?
That area was expanded after May tenth.
Okay, so what we were looking at as of May tenth is those three, the twenty-six thirty, thirty-nine fifty, and fifty-ten for the lower part.
Sorry, now I'm confused, but the, but the main, really, it's just, I had over twenty-two thousand square feet prior to May tenth and thirteen thousand something was within the seventy-five foot setback line and needed to be adjusted for, and that is what I did. Did?
The bottom terrace was partially in existence, but just not in the size that it is now.
So what was it as of May tenth?
I don't know if I could give you an exact number on that, to be honest, but the size of it, I mean, she had intended, well, we had intended on doing a terrace here, a terrace here, and a terrace here. So like about this area of the terrace was already in existence.
Well, when I look at these pictures, there's a big difference at the bottom between May one, okay, and and the, whatever the next one is. Yeah, September third, there's a huge difference, maybe like fifteen thousand square feet difference. That's what I'm trying to get at, is what did you guys have in that lower part as of May tenth?
As of May tenth, we had a terrace of like approximate size of this here.
Can you go back to the previous picture? In our package, it's figure two, and that's the one that shows it as May first.
Yeah, so part of this was already in existence. And we, I mean, we had already, we had dug the flat pad and, yeah, it was there, I guess, I don't know how that.
And that upper terrace is the one that's going to be in your setback?
The upper right?
Yeah.
That was in my original belief of the setback, but after the information from Cal State, I didn't even include that in the thirteen thousand total that I was allowed to.
But that's what you thought was next to the property lines and that's the area you were moving?
Originally, absolutely, yes.
Okay, got it.
It was, however, even without that, I was still had enough of an adjustment allowance to do all the grading that I did that that was done, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
A moment ago, you said that you had over twenty-two thousand square feet graded.
Prior to May tenth.
Prior to May tenth.
Correct.
This picture is the only one I've seen that's even close to it and it doesn't even, it says ninety-eight sixty. And that arrow is pointing to the terrace on the bottom and on the upper.
This, this.
Can you please explain to me how you had over twenty-two thousand?
Yes, this picture was, oh, I'm so sorry, I did not mean to interrupt you. This picture was taken May first. So this was before the grading project of twenty.
Nine days.
Yes.
That's when she started all the grading?
Yes.
Because the ordinance was was going in and she was complying, trying to get to this twenty-two?
No, but she's saying as of, before May tenth, you had over twenty-two thousand.
That is correct.
You added ten thousand square feet in nine days or less?
I had the lower area, which was four thousand square feet. And I also had created the upper pad and the, and the part that was once a road. And I had twenty-two thousand square feet before May tenth. This picture is before that even begun. That's why, that's why it is, it is confusing and because the shape of the terracing changed.
Okay, now, on that lower part, looking at this May one picture, on the lower part.
Yeah.
There was no additional grading done on that part prior to May tenth, was there?
On the lower, lower part, in the bottom of the land, that's not depicted in this photo?
But there wasn't any grading on the lower part beyond what's already shown there prior to May tenth, correct? You moved him down from the upper part to the lower part on May tenth?
Moved him to this area.
On May tenth?
Yes.
Okay, so that May one picture accurately represents the lower part as of May tenth as well, does it not?
Wait, I think I'm confused, I'm sorry. I don't want to answer your question incorrectly, but I I am confused.
Okay, on May second, you brought So Diggin' in to do grading.
Correct.
You put him on the upper part, correct?
Yes, he he graded the upper part and like this general area and had created this part that was a road, this, basically this area, if that explains.
And then on May tenth, you figured out that you thought that grading that you had done up on top.
Yes.
At least some of it and the northeast terrace was within a seventy-five foot setback.
Yes.
And so on May tenth, you set him down on the lower part, correct?
Yes.
And so prior to May tenth, the lower part here looked exactly as it did on May one, correct?
The lower part?
Yes.
Yes.
Where it says edge of twenty fifteen, twenty-six graded footprint, that remained the same through May tenth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so everything we see below that on the September third, twenty sixteen photograph is post-May tenth grading and cultivation, correct?
This lower terrace?
Below that. Anything below that?
I'm so sorry, I don't know why I'm confused again. Sean, are you understanding exactly what he's asking?
Yeah, the, the bottom terrace, like it, it's hard to tell from the pictures because I think I know what you're asking. If you look.
It's the difference between those two.
Yeah.
That's post-May tenth.
Okay.
Right?
The, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
When you look at the difference between this September third photograph on the lower part, what's graded and cultivated, and the May one, the additional area that's graded and cultivated was graded post-May tenth, correct?
Can you go back to the other picture?
Oh, I think I might, I'm sorry, I think I've.
Okay, if you go to the other picture.
September third?
Okay, do you see how big that lower is, area is now?
Yes.
Compared to the previous picture?
Correct.
When did all that lower excavation happen?
This lower terrace was excavated after May tenth for the proportional adjustment.
However, some of that lower terrace is still part of the other garden that was there.
Correct, we see, we see the other garden that was there. But what we're trying to figure out is when the expansion took place from change, from when she thought the seventy-five foot back was in the way and she moved it down and expanded it. That's all we're looking at, right? Is that what you're looking at? Okay.
Now, looking again at this picture, where is the property line on the lower end, on the lower part? Is it within seventy-five feet of what we see graded?
The the lower property line is isn't visible in this slide, it applies to a different area. Sean, can you find the slide that Cal State, I I can show you on a different slide?
Well, as I understand it, you're claiming four thousand feet of proportional adjustment on the lower end.
I see exactly where the confusion is now, I believe.
If you look in your packets, there's a blow-up map from Cal State. The the lower end on the bottom end of the property is actually not depicted in these pictures at all.
You have that one still of?
I don't have.
Well, if it's not on these pictures at all, then it didn't exist as of May one.
No, no, it did, it was an existing, it was a pad that had been on the property for a long time, like it wasn't graded at all. It was, if you look on them, there is a blow-up map from Cal State and it does show the two property lines. I believe it's exhibited.
What you gave us today.
Yes, 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 yes.
It was area that, there is one picture of it, do you want to flip to the one where it shows the dirt? It doesn't show it from far enough to explain this point, but that area on the lower area. Okay, because I'm, I'm sorry, I understand why this is confusing. There's a lower terrace and then there's a lower area of the property, which is not in those terraces. It's, it was, it was, this is the area below all of the terraces towards the entrance to the property. It, this, I didn't grade, this was previously graded.
Okay, so was it cultivated previously?
Yes, we had the plants here, we were, this was part of the planned cultivation area for twenty sixteen prior to May, to May tenth.
Well, had it actually been cultivated prior to May tenth?
It had plants cultivated on it, yes, before May tenth.
Before you owned it, before you rented it?
Uh, before I owned it, no cultivation had happened on the land.
And and was this within that seventy-five?
It was, yes, yes.
So this is part of what you were.
Yeah, exactly, that's, yes, that's, this is what we're trying to explain. I know it's, there's a lot of details.
Is this the one you refer to as down by the mine?
It is, yes.
And it's approximately eight thousand square feet?
Yes, and those numbers came from Cal State Engineering. And it is, it, we had another picture, I don't know, we don't have it at the moment.
That's within the seventy-five foot?
It is. If you want, I can find a picture on my computer and show you. Or do we, is there one in the?
There is a map in your packet, I'm sorry, I forget what exhibit it is, but it does show.
There you go.
A full blow-up, there you go. It does show the seventy-five foot property lines and it does show that, yes, that the bottom pad is fully within the seventy-five foot property line.
Okay, so there are other items in the resolution that we probably need to address. Does that answer all of your questions on the grading?
On the grading.
Okay, so let's move to item number two of the resolution then.
What's happening? I think she, she's going to tell us. Thank you.
Okay. So if we look at the next item, which would be your not having a six-foot top fence and the material?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things that we've ruled consistently on is, yes, code compliance came out in January and said you need to put up your fence.
Right.
The fence was supposed to be up June thirtieth, not January two thousand seventeen. So that's been something we've ruled pretty consistent on.
Okay.
Did you have a fence up? Did you start a fence? Was it not completed? Was it eighty percent, sixty percent? Talk to us a little bit about that.
Sure, my fence was in progress throughout the season of twenty sixteen. I purchased materials, I I set up T-posts, I had.
I'm sorry, Sarah, there's been constant phones going off through this whole hearing. Can we have you, everybody put their phones on silent, please? Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, I, yes, the fence was in, was in progress throughout the season of twenty sixteen. I, the terrain, I know that, I know that this does not constitute a fence, but it was in progress. And the area on this, on the eastern side where I could not pound the T-posts was six-foot tall ficket of manzanita with a steep embankment on one side that was reasonable to keep out intruders and children. I'm not saying that that was sufficient, but I was in progress and unable to move forward and had an opening to deadline after my inspection that made it unclear that I would, I was out of, that I was going to be denied because of that when I was in, I was in progress but waiting because a, the grading remediation project is going to cause me to tear the entire fence out and then put it all back in. So because I had no deadline, I was, I was going to make a prudent financial decision to wait until the grading, regrading project was approved and completed and then continue the fence.
You realize you did have a deadline of June thirtieth, correct?
I I understand that on, on June thirtieth, that law passed and I began progress on the fence.
And you say you didn't have a deadline, that's based on that email saying you don't need to do it immediately?
Correct.
Is that what you're relying on?
Yes.
By the way, in my, my earlier statements before you got up here.
Yeah.
I was, I had lost track of when the denial happened. I was, I had lost track of when the denial happened. So, when, when did you go into high gear on the fencing to actually comply? Was it after the denial?
It was after the denial. I, I had my inspection and then after the inspection, I was given a list of things to correct. The fence was not on the list of things to correct. It was brought up later in a January 2030 email from Tom Watts that explained and, and expressed that there was, there was an open-ended deadline and that it was not being enforced currently because of the, the potential ban. And, and then I later sent more clarification, letting him know that I was intending to put up a fence, but because of the re-grading project, if, if, because there was no deadline, I would be waiting until the re-grading so that I didn't have to rip the entire fence out and put it back in. After I realized that the grading project was going to take months, I didn't realize how long it takes in Public Work Department, and it had been turned in, so I thought it would be getting going quicker. They told me the timeframe and I realized I might as well just get that fence in even if I have to rip it out later. So I completed the fence and it was proven by the inspection. I did, I didn't have another inspection until after my denial. I didn't get a second inspection to prove that those things were completed, which is one of the reasons why I felt that it was inconsistently handled.
You said you didn't have a deadline. What did you mean by that?
This, this email right here where it says...
Code enforcement.
All right, that was in his letter of January 23, but you did get a letter from him, I guess it's an email, actually, on January 13th, which gave you the 10 days that led up to that day.
In that initial email after my inspection, the fence was not included in the list of corrections.
True, but the other items were?
And the, all the other items were completed, within the 10 days.
Okay, I've got some questions on the fencing.
Sure.
Your appeal says it's nearly impossible to pound T-post into fill?
Yes.
Why, why is that so? One would think it would be easier.
Well, okay, yes, I'll, I'll clarify that. It is easier to pound the T-post into the filled dirt. However, the T-post won't stand up once they're pounded.
They're unstable. Did you try longer T-posts?
I was using eight-foot T-posts.
And they still wiggled?
Yeah, they still just, once you go to put the fencing, I mean, I, this is my first time installing a fence, so I'm by no means an expert, but I tried my hardest and I, I got help from friends and, and family. And it, when you put the fencing on a T-post that's not stable, it just all collapses. It's kind of like trying to build a house with Jell-O, if that's any kind of explanation.
You also said you had a problem with fencing because of the terraces, and I can understand it's pretty tough to build a fence going down like this and so forth.
Right.
But couldn't you move away from the terraces more towards your property line and put the fence so it didn't have to cross the terraces?
It wa, the brush is so thick and it was steep. I had, I did actually have the fence partially construction, constructed on the western side where the slope was gradual and the other side, I had, I had not finished it yet.
Okay, I understand the brush problem, but you can take care of brush with a cat or a chainsaw. So, you could have hired somebody to go in there and clean, clean along the fence line, off the terrorist area, get rid of the manzanita and put in the fence, right?
I do understand that, and that's why, I, go ahead, Sean, wanted to express.
On the west, on the eastern side of the garden, it's an old mine on the property and there's a giant rock pit. It's like this.
It's a, it's a, it's a mine shaft the size of this room.
Terrace and then a giant hole from the mine that was there.
You can see it from the aerial probably even. It's basically a, a big pit the size of this room, so it's, it's not just steep because of the grade, it is a, a, a giant pit.
Well, we didn't have to put the fence over the pit, but you could have gone around it, right?
Well, if you look over there at the, the eastern edge of the garden, it's really hard to see even in this photo, but there's an area, wait, let me grab the pointer. This area right here is a giant pile of fill rock that came out when they created that mine shaft and, so basically, this, this area approximately right here is a giant pit. And so the edge of this garden is very close to that pit. Since then, we've, we've managed to put the, the fence in right here, but...
Did your property go all the way to that road that's shown at the bottom part of the screen?
Uh, yes.
Why didn't you put the fence there?
I didn't realize it could be that far out and I thought it needed to be closer to the cultivation area. I, and, yeah, and that would also require a lot of, well, I mean, not that I wouldn't mind doing it, but, yeah, sorry. If I'm, oh, go ahead. Any more questions about that?
Yeah, one more.
Sure.
Did you complete the fence with the gates locked and all as required before you had live cannabis plants in your grow area this year?
I still do not have live cannabis plants growing on my site this year because I was told that unless approved, that would not be allowable.
Okay. But there was a time in 2016 when you were growing and you didn't have the fence, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Done on fencing.
Any further questions on fencing?
Nope. If I may say just a short word of what I wrote about the fence, just to reiterate my perspective here. The fence has been completed. It's been proven that it's been completed. No, no final inspection was conducted before my application was denied. After my first inspection, I didn't, I wasn't given the opportunity to have a second inspection before I was denied. And I think that that constitutes unfair procedural practices because I, I was denied before I had the chance to even prove with an inspection that everything had been corrected. And, and when Courtney came and protect, uh, I'm sorry, inspected, he noted that everything was remediated.
If I can just say something, there, there is precedent for people being allowed time to put up their fence. Greg Stapleton, who's someone she referenced already, he had no fence on his first inspection. He was allowed time to remediate the fence and his commission granted his appeal unanimously. On this issue, I think that we should be held to the same standard as Greg Stapleton and have, have the time to complete the fence since we were given an open-ended timeframe and we completed it within that.
I was never going to have a fair chance to comply and even having complete, comply, sorry, complied, I still was denied, even without the appropriate due process that had been afforded to other applicants who were able to have the county out for a final inspection to demonstrate compliance.
Can we go to public comment now?
What about the other code violations?
I'm getting tired.
On, on the, the issue?
Please.
On the issue of the, the other code violations other than, than the grading?
Yes.
And the fencing. You will agree that there were violations, correct? I mean, I'm, you don't need to admit this, but I'm just trying to make this fast.
Sure.
There were violations, the violations were set forth in January that you needed to correct, plus the fencing wasn't mentioned, we're not dealing with the fencing right now.
Right, right.
And you say within 10 days, all those violations were taken care of. That was the, the...
Yep, that is correct.
All the pictures you've presented to us of there's no longer any bathroom, there's no longer any of this.
Absolutely.
And, and that was then, after you were denied, there was another inspection and code compliance confirmed that there had been the corrections.
Yes. That is correct.
Okay, so, at least the, the facts appear to me to be clear. Anybody have questions on the facts?
Not on this part.
On the code violation. Then, then I appreciate your comments on including that as a, as a ground of denial.
Okay.
So, Sarah, you had the fence done by February 2nd or so?
I honestly do not remember the date.
Because you were noticed on January 23rd to get the fence done? And was that a 10-day notice as well, or was that just an email?
I had, it was an open, it was that email that you guys saw that had no, no timeline.
We were told in writing that the Planning Department wasn't enforcing the requirement for a fence.
As I understand it, I believe she has said that the fencing was completed after the denial.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, do you have anything further to add?
On the fencing?
No.
Oh, sorry.
On anything.
Oh, okay.
Because I don't want to close your presentation and go to public until you've gotten your chance.
So my question is, I would like to hear your position on the fact that there is denial now made on the base, on partially on the basis of the code violations, which you agree did exist, but you, you, your position that you fixed it with 10 days?
Right.
Of the code compliance?
Yes.
What do you have to say about that?
Okay, gotcha. Just one sec. Okay. I'm gonna read what I have written here. The, I think Sean may have something to add, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, are you asking why that we had someone out in May to close a code violation when she's saying that all the things on her ticket were fixed in 10 days?
No, I'm, I'm just, I want to know her, given the facts, which I've stated and which I think everybody's in agreement with, I just wanted to hear her position on the fact that, okay, when all those facts have occurred and now there's a denial that's partially on the basis of the violations that did exist in 2016 but were remediated in 2017. And I just want your position on it.
Right. I would like to, I would like to say that that, that's just, that pretty much is already taken care of. I don't want to waste any more of your time on that issue, but I would like to make a closing statement. Okay. Sorry, I have to find it. Okay, oh, no. So as I have noted, I believe that Greg Stapleton's appeal, decided by the same commission, sets forth a precedent for cases such as my own. The precedent is simple. In cases where the county has demonstratively failed to provide clear and concise directions to applicants regarding the expectations and requirements for coming into compliance and where the applicants have demonstrated an ongoing good faith effort to follow all directives and requirements outlined in the county, applicants should, should not have their applications and appeals denied for reasons related to the failure to comply arising out of the county's failure to provide clear direction regarding how to comply. At the time Greg Stapleton's inspections and appeal occurred, the county had not published their guidelines regarding hoop houses and greenhouses. Mr. Stapleton was denied for failure to comply with these unpublished guidelines, a fact that was brought up in his appeal and was significant, was a significant factor resulting in this commission deciding to grant his appeal. At no time either before or during the period in which I initiated the grading work on my property, nor at the time of inspection, nor even now, has the county published any guidelines clarifying it and addressing the pre-existing grading done prior to the U.O. under the auspice of the Ag exemption in 15.05.080 of the county code. Individually, after my inspection, I was told to remediate my grading by implementing erosion control and contacting Cal State Engineering, and I was given an open-ended timeline to come into compliance without ever being given a clear deadline. Then in April, I got denied for having graded after the May 10th deadline, even though my, my situation falls under both the Ag exemption for projects initiated prior to the U.O. and the setback exemption carved out within the U.O. I too am being denied for violating unpublished guidelines governing a particular unclear area of the regulatory framework established by the U.O. For the same reasons, this commission came to a unanimous decision to grant Greg Stapleton's appeal at the, this commission, I would hope, would grant my appeal as well. In closing, I want to think, well, sorry, I just thought of one other thing I wanted to about the, about the code compliance. It was stated as a reason for denial on my letter of denial, however, in, in the inspection of my garden area and site, January 12th, where I received a letter the next day, it wasn't stated that history of code complaints or open codes was a, a, still an open, it, it wasn't stated that it needed to be corrected to be able to not be denied, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, say that one more time, Sarah. Keep talking on that one.
What? Oh, this is already on the screen? I was just made aware of. Okay, so I'm gonna go into the rest of my, sorry about that, okay. In closing, I want to thank you all for, or ask you all to think of the reasons you granted Greg Stapleton's appeal. I want you to understand that it will be very difficult for me to stay in this community where I grew up and make a living and build a home if my appeal is denied. I've tried with all of my abilities to build a life here. I have bought property. I've spent tens of thousands of dollars just to defend my property rights to access my land. I have begun a business and I am doing all that I can to give back and be a productive member of the community. I'm trying to get to a place where I can build my home and be near my family. I am from here and I want to stay here in Calaveras County. Please consider my sincerity and the evidence of the statements as you make your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to public comment before we...
Well, this is gonna be like following the Rolling Stones. She just had this great presentation, everything she said was true. I know this lady to be very honest, her parents are here. Great, great family. You know, she was, she was given a road, a path to compliance, and she took it. She complied. She's one of the, she's one of the growers that has done a good job, worked in good faith with the county. So if the county chooses to work not in good faith, I don't think that's, that's appropriate here. You have a lot of grows out there, a lot of, a lot of registered applicants that don't have, have not complied at this point and that are gonna be growing into the year. Here you have somebody that's willing to pay their taxes, that's a, that's an upstanding member of the community. Family's been here for a long time, and these are exactly the people that we were trying to protect with this urgency ordinance. It wasn't the people that were, were coming here from outside. We, we said it in those hearings, that it was these people that we wanted to help. Okay? So I can't add much to what she said because everything she said is true. And she is very concise about, about how to handle this, how you guys should handle the situation. I would say, and it's easy for me to say, to grant the appeal. It's almost 5 o'clock, I'm very tired, so please excuse me for the day.
Hang in there, we only got five more hearings.
I am, and you know, I gotta commend you guys.
Thank you.
I'd have weekly hearings if I was you folks.
Thank you.
Hi there, Kaz Tomaszewski of Milk Hill. I'm not up here much for appeals. The reason being is because I think that the county departments and you guys have done a great job. Most of the time, people come up here, mm, it's pretty clear we're getting denied. I have spoken twice at an appeal. Both times, the appeal was approved. I generally tend to speak at appeals where I think there's enough going on to where it should be looked at. The, the problem with this one is, it's complicated. There's a lot going on. I spent the last two hours writing up my understanding of the points and why I believe that this appeal should be granted. The primary issue here is post-May 10th grading. In order to be legal, this grading would have to have created no more new canopy space than was rendered ungrowable due to being within 75 feet of the property line. The planning department attests that the new canopy area created was not proportional to the area lost due to being within 75 foot of the property line. It comes to this conclusion by comparing the total end canopy as of May 31st, 2016 to a picture of canopy taken on May 1st, 2016. However, the appellant has attested that she performed an expansion of her canopy space after May 1st, which was finished before May 10th, making it a legal expansion. This is important because it means that the May 1st photo is not a valid representation of her total legal canopy at midnight on May 9th, which is the only number that could be used to correctly perform the math on what canopy adjustment would be considered legally proportional. which is the only number that could be used to correctly perform the math on what canopy adjustment would be considered legally proportional. This information has been affirmed by, I believe it was a contractor, who corroborates the appellant's claim that her legal canopy space as of midnight on May 9th was 22,000 square feet. Taking into account this new number, it appears her canopy area adjustment post-May 10th was indeed proportional. While the issue has been raised that the appellant did not obtain a grading permit to perform this work, the planning department sent the appellant official correspondence stating that they would be allowed to obtain a retroactive grading permit. Additionally, not only has the planning department approved tens of farms without grading permits to date, or, um, it is, and allowed multiple farms to obtain retrograding, retroactive grading permits, but this commission has granted the appeal of previous appellants without one, firmly establishing precedent that a lack of grading permit does not on its own constitute grounds for denial. The second issue is in regards to consistency on behalf of the county. In January of 2017, planning sent a letter to the appellant informing her that she needed to get a retroactive grading permit for her grading. Code compliance sent her a list of other issues to fix on the property. 10 days later, she had fixed every issue excepting the fence, which the county had in one case failed to mention as needing fixing, and in another stated was not a requirement that was any, being enforced anymore. Four months later, after tens of thousands of dollars in labor, materials, and contracting fees, the county changed its position and informed the appellant that she was to be denied entirely due to these factors which she was previously allowed to remediate in official explicit correspondence from the county.
You have about 20 seconds left.
I think this is firmly within the realm of the Stapleton appeal. I think there is enough evidence of unclear communication from the county on what its standards are, what she had to do, to at least say that she incurred four months of damages because of the unclear communication of the county. Whether or not that is enough for you to grant the appeal, I don't know. I will tell you that Sarah is probably one of the best people I know in this county that does what we do. She's at every volunteer event. She does everything. She hauls food, she loads trucks, she's at the fundraiser, she's everywhere. It would break my heart if she didn't make it through this, and I think she's been jacked around. And I think it's enough to where she deserves to make it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill McManus. As I, uh, someone left a thing here. I don't, I don't wanna mess it up. Each week or every other week, I, I like going through the, um, the agenda packets for the planning commission with all the appeals that come up. They're most interesting. Then I can go through them with safety and comfort in my own home and not come down here and be brutalized by how much you have to go through. I don't know how you do it. And looking at, uh, this particular file, I have never seen more, a more egregious violator of practically everything in the urgency ordinance. And yet, the, the environmental damage that's probably already been done doesn't go away when you just haul off the outhouse, you know, where Ross Sewage is going into the ground, and some of the other things that are done. These are the things that are never gonna be addressed. Has anyone gone out there for an environmental impact, uh, inspection? Just because the source is gone doesn't mean that the damage is gone. You know, and to listen to someone say, "Well, they didn't tell me this, and they didn't tell me that, and the code compliance guy didn't tell me this, and planning didn't tell me that." County employees are not private contractors for people who are trying to correct their problems. You've got a list of things that are supposed to be done. Go do it. It's not up to the county to tell you how you, how to do it, or when you've gotten it done right, or what you have to do yet. You either get it right or you don't. So I think, I think it's insulting to say that it's somehow the county employee's problems, that she doesn't know how to fix the problems, uh, that they found. That's up to the, that's up to the landowner, that's up to the applicant. In closing, I gotta say I was stunned. Normally I print off the packet, but it was too long. The one page out of the packet I had to keep was a letter from code compliance. This is absolutely stunning. That given the current uncertainty regarding the future of commercial cannabis cultivation within Calaveras County, the planning department is not insisting this be completed immediately. On whose authority do statements like that, this get put out? The planning director doesn't have the authority to make statements like this. This comes directly out of the ordinance.
30 seconds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who has the authority to do this in code compliance? To make decisions that affect the entire county, that undermines the ordinances that the Board of Supervisors has passed, whether you like it or not, this is outrageous. And it sends a message to everybody that, hey, don't worry about it, we'll get to you when we get to you. And that's why we're having these problems. That's why it's taken so long to get them cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Chris Metz, resident and business owner of District 2. I work in real estate and commercial property management. I've known Sarah, worked with her for over two years. Sarah Hodson has helped my team and I design and plan organic farming methods. We have debates about the best way to deal with pests using organic IPM strategies. While I've gotten to know Sarah, I've learned that she's the kind of small farmer that this county needs. Not only did Sarah grow up in Calaveras, but she's heavily involved with volunteering and helping people in need throughout the county. I've seen her make volunteering a priority over working in her own farm or doing things for her own benefit. She's a generous, helping person. Sarah is a shining example of an environmentally conscious farmer who cares about the community and respects her neighbors. Recently, it was brought to my attention that her application was denied. I strongly urge you to reconsider this. Sarah is a kind of farmer Calaveras County needs. She is local, respectful, environmentally conscious, kind, and giving. Denying her would be a great mistake. Thank you for your time. I thank you for your patience. I know you guys do this, it's a long, hard process, but thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Wilson again, District 1. This is actually the one I came for. Took a little while to get to. Apologize for interrupting and being part of the, uh, but I felt like I could be beneficial in some of those other instances. Anyway, Sarah is a local child, grew up here, is trying to make a living here. She's a woman in a business in our county. She's prepared to pay taxes on that 22,000 square feet. That's $22,000 that could go into the tax base today. She also has tried very hard to come into compliance, and she was given a, a carrot each time saying, "Please do this, do this, and you'll be okay." No, you're denied. To deny her is to deny one of your own that has grown up here, that was not part of what the UO was put in place to keep from being here. She has tried to come into compliance. I know one of the farms that I worked with, they don't have a fence. They cut a hole out of an orchard. There's no fence around that property. There's a fence across the front, there's a fence down the side, but there's a creek in the back they can't fix. So the fence problem's a problem, the grading problem's a problem. A lot of us did grading. I did grading four years ago. When I came and did grading, I told the county I was gonna grow marijuana for medical use. They said, "No problem, go out and do your farm. Go out and do any grading you wanted. It's no problem." Under the UO, immediately, now we have to have permits. I went to the building department, or the, the department we were supposed to go to, I forget which one it is. And they said, "Well, no, if you did grading two, three years ago, you're okay. Don't worry about it. You don't have anything." We could have expanded our garden, because we did grade much more than the poor little 3,000 square foot we grow. But we didn't bother because we couldn't afford to put a bigger fence around our place. We put up the screening to try to keep it from being seen from the road. Basically, that's impossible because of the terrain. And actually, the screening and the wind at our place was so strong that it pulled the post out and the cement that was this deep in the ground, out of the ground. But that's never, that's beside the point. The point is, Sarah would be one, that is one of the good growers. She's, I think she's tried her damnedest to do the best she can. Was everybody clear on what the outcome was supposed to be of this? A lot of us were confused. We tried our best. I think she tried her best. I think she deserves a chance to continue to grow in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, my name is Niall Plouffe. I'm a certified construction inspector by three governing bodies for the construction world, excuse me. I'd just like to say that based on the aerial photo measurements, my farm was 6,000 square feet off when the inspector came to my site. My pots are very clearly seen from the air. The green lines around it were very clearly drawn and accurate. However, the interpretation of that information was not, so I'm not sure how calibrated the system is or what the transference of information, um, incurs, because I'm not part of your program. However, if it's not calibrated, it, it shouldn't be used for these, physical dimensions should be used for these. With calibrated equipment, you're, you're affecting people's lives with this information. Also, what happens at lower levels of inspection programs isn't what you guys do. You guys see black and white. What happens in the field, as was just said by one of the people who spoke out against Sarah, is that statements are made, comments are made. People want to generally get along on that level of the hierarchy, and we want to see everybody do well. And it does create confusion when you try to be a nice guy as an inspector, and you try to give people the opportunity to correct the problems, because you can see on the ground in real time, they're trying to do a good job. We're all trying to do a good job and follow the rules. It's very easy for me in the field to go out to a job site and find a thousand things wrong that black and white could make the job a real problem for the contractor. However, the job still has to get done. Things still have to move forward. I understand that's not always how government works, but the people who are doing a good job of trying to do this, these things in good faith, really should be given a chance to do things in good faith. I mean, it takes two sides of a coin to make a coin. That's all I really have to say, is please give people an opportunity to do the right thing, even if they don't know exactly the path they were supposed to follow, because it is fluid. This is a fluid time in these regulations. Give us a chance to do the right thing. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Can I remind you all to please sign in?
Hi, Susan Hardenbrook. As I told you when I talked about Ben Gunderson not having any problems with my creeks, I have six different commercial-sized marijuana grows that touch my property. Sarah is one. She is upstream of most of my property. Well, she's in the middle, my property. I have had continuing problems of silt coming down from her grow during 2015. We talked about it. She said she would be getting erosion control people in there. It comes down in a natural flow area, and the water before it joins this is completely clear and afterwards is completely brown. This year, after the growing, after the grading that she did, it got, of course, much worse. And even with all the rain we've had this year, the amount of silt that's staying in Indian Creek, which then goes down to Frico City Road and all these other things, i- is huge. Um, and I'm not sure what else has come off with it, with the silt, but, um, there's been a lot of, of, and I would consider environmental damage to Indian Creek because of this grow site. And I'll sign in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission, or evening now. Uh, Mark Bolger, Mountain Ranch, and signed in. Just a couple thoughts. The last speaker mentioned, uh, silt, which is nothing to laugh about. That's not anything that any commercial site should have coming off of it. I question the validity of blaming one commercial site for the degradation of all the Indian Creek. I haven't looked at the aerial map, but I'm just, I'm making a thought there. Anyway, when it comes to the fencing, uh, I wish we had someone from code compliance here. I don't think we do still.
Yeah, I think they left.
Um, I would encourage you guys to ask them how many dozens, if not scores, of sites have been inspected where there was either no fencing or incomplete fencing in the last several months. I'm not talking, I know in the last few weeks or month or so, they've been, uh, taking a very hard-line approach, but well into 2016, there were many sites, not mine of course, um, that weren't properly fenced. I can think of many, many, many farms that were given the ability to fix that after the fact. Uh, I understand, and I read the ordinance, that by June 30th, fencing should be installed. I'm not trying to make an excuse here. I just think that, you know, there's been a plethora of cases where code compliance has observed, uh, sites without full fencing well past that June 30th deadline, and those people have not been denied. So I'd encourage you to reach out to those folks before you make any decisions based on that factor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commission. Trevor Whitkey, um, with CCA. I believe that Sarah's appeal should be granted in this case for a number of reasons. I think they've been outlined throughout the day. There have been issues about unclear directives given by staff. The email that she received on January 23rd was a very unclear directive from staff saying that given the current circumstance, it, there wasn't a firm deadline for when she had to come into compliance. That is a mitigating factor additionally. When we look at the issue of the proportional adjustment, I believe that the benefit of the doubt should be given to the appellant. The appellant has come here with third-party independent verified information. She has contracted with these third parties as she was told to do and encouraged to do by county staff. She went through and actually had a survey done. She had upgrading plan conducted, and in this information, it is very clear from the third, independent third party that she was allowed to move her proportional adjustment for 13,390 square feet. That is 10,890 square feet greater than the estimate that was given by county staff of what she was allowed. Now, we need to look at the veracity and validity of these two estimates. The independent contractor from Cal State Engineering gave an estimate based on an objective analysis using a survey. The analysis that was given by county staff was off of aerial photography and was repeatedly referred to as a subjective analysis based off of what they thought she was going to grow off of when reading a topographical map. That is not rise to the same level of specificity as the objective analysis provided by the third party. And I believe that that third-party data is the most valid information that we have to form our decisions on and should be used when looking at the issue of the proportional adjustment. Given that, it is clear that she changed the proportional adjustment into a square footage that is smaller than the 13,390 square feet that was estimated, uh, by Cal State Engineering. And so she clearly falls within the exemption carved out in the urgency ordinance. In addition to this, a lot of people, myself included, engaged in grading prior to the urgency ordinance under the presumption that we were operating agricultural activities. And that 15 dot 5 zero dot 08, the agricultural exemption for grading, was a permissible use within the county code. And so I believe that she was operating under the same premise when she initiated her project, and there wasn't any guidelines or clear communication on how that issue gets approached.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Kyle Walker, District 4. I've been to quite a few of these appeals, uh, some in front of this board, some in front of the supervisors. And it does seem that there are a lot of very black and white, deny these people, get them out of our county. I truly believe that there's a lot of gray area here that needs to be taken into consideration. And I would just like to say that, ask any, a lot of people, Sarah is just an outstanding member of this community. She grew up here. She's at every volunteer thing ever. I mean, she really does take a hit on her business to, to help everybody. And, uh, she's just a huge benefit here, and I really believe that with all this evidence, uh, all of it should be taken to consideration. And, uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, Colleen Platt, My Valley Springs and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. As you know, we don't usually comment on these cannabis appeals. It's more process issues. And that's what I'm speaking of. This, this one is confusing. This one is confusing to the public, as I'm sure it is to you and to everybody else. I thank you, Lisa, for, I think you brought up something that maybe I can hold on to, that there's actually two separate issues here, that there's an ordinance requirement and then there's code compliance. You've got two separate issues, and it seems to be all getting confused here. You know, you're mentioning the urgency ordinance requirements for grading permits and all these violations, that that violations are being fixed and retroactive grading plans have been applied for. So, you know, does the question of, does fixing the violations offset the original violation of the requirement in the urgency ordinance? That's what's confusing to us. So maybe if you could address that, that would help.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to.
I can see the separations, but I see the gray area, too. So I'm not sure.
I have some code here that we'll get to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Griffin, District Two. Just want to take off from what Mr. McNannus pointed out, not the part about how code enforcement doesn't have that right. Whether or not they do, they've given Sarah a continually moving target for compliance. And having read the letters that she's received, the one that had a 10-day deadline, she met all the requirements in that 10-day window. As you know, the one about the fence, they pretty much explicitly said there is no deadline. Given that, not that it's anybody's intent, it's just, I believe, an interdepartmental and interpersonal disconnect, but it ends up being perceived from my end out here like denying her would be kind of a bait and switch. Like I say, no blame there. I think it's a disconnect and difference in style and position, but just consider it. Thank you.
Last season, I worked for a horrible human being to set up shop in this county strictly to take advantage of its generous cultivation standards. Found out later throughout the season, he had no plans to stay here, no plans to contribute to the community. He had no plans to fully abide by the regulations of the ordinance in this county. He disrespected the land, frauded his investors, and near the end of the season, he got wind that I might possibly inform them. He stole my phone with all the evidence in it and took off with not only the crop and my entire year's salary as well. It was at this point that Sarah found me penniless and homeless. She took me in. She not only gave me a job, she gave me a home. Her family took me in and treated me as one of their own. That wasn't all she did. She showed me what it looked like to be a responsible grower and a pillar of a community, what it looks like to really genuinely care about doing things the right way, what it looks like to try your best to follow every rule and care about not just a property, but a county's future. Sarah's not just one of the good ones. She's one of the best ones. She has had to deal with extreme circumstances and handle them in a manner I thought would have been impossible for humans that are far more intelligent than I will ever be, from convoluted county standards to extreme weather, to differences with neighbors, and all sorts of different things. I've watched her never lose sight of the end goal, which was to construct a compliant, profitable business that would allow her not only to stay in the county she loves, but better it in any way she can. She regularly volunteers at community functions, donates funds to community programs, and, as is clearly present in this room today, is adored by pretty much every single person she comes across. At last count, this county has only a little over 100 legal cannabis operations, and I found out at the last BOS meeting that it needs approximately 220 to manifest the funds of desires. It is my belief that Sarah's operation is a prime example of a farm that has shown it will jump through any hoop and will continue to jump through any hoop so that it can be counted in that number to add to the undoubted prosperity this industry will bring this county. She loves this county. Please let her do her part, pay her taxes, and help it prosper. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Elliott, District Four. I work with soil all over this state, and I got to point out the bioremediation factors that Sarah's already looked into, the multitude of different aspects to fix the grading issues, it's not happening. There's hundreds in Mountain Ranch. All over the state, people are just destroying stuff, and they're not doing anything near what she's doing to fix the problem. She's an asset to our county. Please, please grant her appeal. That's the kind of people we need.
Is there any more public comment? Okay, then we will close public comment and bring it back to Paul. Do you have anything further you would like to add?
No, that's fine. Yes, I do have a few comments here. In regards to proportional adjustment, we saw a 9,390 square foot. Excuse me, I'm sorry. In regards to the proportional adjustment, there was a 9,390 square foot area represented as the northwest terrace within the setback that was purported to be eligible for the proportional adjustment. Now, when you look at the topography on that, it is not consistent with the way she has previously developed the site. She's claiming that's grow area. All of her previously developed grows and the terraces she developed in 2016 were perfectly, not perfectly flat, but they're flat. It's not the kind of slope that she has traditionally grown on out there. So I really question whether that is a true proportional adjustment or is it something that's being created to fit the necessity of the moment? Also, the 4,000 square foot grow area on the lower portion of the parcel, that was not shown in the plot plans that she submitted to with her application as far as being part of the proportional adjustment. You will not find that there. And again, is this something that's being created to fit the facts? I don't know. And that's my comments on proportional adjustment. In regards to the fence, she has admitted that the fence was in progress throughout 2016. It was never continuous. It was never, it was never finished. The fence needed to be in place on June 30th. That was the deadline. June 30th, 2016, is the deadline. I don't see what we're missing here. It was actually finished on May 23rd. That's 11 months. People are regularly denied here for missing a deadline on a seller's permit, a business license, or something like that, just a day or two beyond the deadline of September 7th. This is an 11-month extension to conform with the requirements of the urgency ordinance. I don't see how that works. And in regards to actually getting that fence on the property, she had heavy equipment on that property. We saw plenty of that. She could have simply abandoned a small portion of her grow area, do as Commissioner Wooster suggested, and simply gone in there, brushed, and done some equipment work, created a fence line. Very simple. This isn't rocket science. So again, there was 11 months of leeway here to play with, to actually bringing herself into compliance with the fence. In regards to the code violations, as I've heard someone else mention here, it's clearly two different situations. There was the active open code case, and then there was the violations that were found much later in January. But that active open code case opened in, it opened in July of 2015, and it didn't close until May of 2017. That is 18 months to come in compliance with violations. That is a history of violations, and that's what she's being denied for, the history. Good faith efforts. I mean, I'm sitting here, I don't mean to necessarily be bashing this young lady. I really don't, but I see some real issues here. Somebody made the comment that this is being environmentally conscious. If you look at those pictures we had up on the screen in the last hour and you honestly tell yourself that's being environmentally conscious, again, I'll use that word, that's subjective. And that will close my class. I'll turn it over to the council.
I wanted to address a couple of things. The email by Tom Watts regarding the open-ended fence deadline, that was a forehead-slapping moment when I saw that email, because it did say that there was an open-ended deadline with respect to the fence. Throughout the presentation, they said there's an open-ended deadline as if it applied to everything else, but it was to the fence. But we can contrast that email to the email that was received in the Stapleton case, which was repeatedly referred to here. And in that case, a member of the planning department, not a member of code enforcement, sent Mr. Stapleton an email saying that your application looks good, paraphrasing here, but if you fix the fence, you're good to go. He detrimentally relied on that representation, spent money, built a fence. Additionally, in his case, which is also distinguishable from this one, he was denied for four reasons, one of which he proved to be false, and that was that he failed to, he was alleged that he failed to reduce his cannabis size when asked to. He was able to use planning's own photos to show that he had done that. And so it's not really a comparable case. And also, with respect to Sarah's case, and she seems like a really nice person and everything, but it's not truthful to argue that there is anything unclear about the requirement to get a grading permit. You can't understand the logic rate for the purposes of proportional adjustment and not understand the second clause which says you must have a grading permit. Additionally, there's a FAQ on the planning commission's webpage that addresses this issue, and it directs you to, it says if you're going to do proportional adjustment, go to Public Works. And finally, there's a difference between code violations that can be remedied, they're minor, that the planning director and his discretion can allow you to fix over time, within a reasonable time, rather than just denying you based on those particular violations. These particular violations were unusual. Those cut banks were massive. When the code enforcement first showed me those pictures and told me that Peter was making them go back out and look again, I was sort of surprised, because the pictures that Courtney took from a neighbor's property showing that those tiers of grading that it could be seen from so far away, it's really kind of shocking. Additionally, within a 10-day period, for fixing the code violations, one of the evidence photos for fixing the latrine, for example, just had the lid of the toilet removed and a piece of plywood screwed over the top of it. It's still a latrine. So I don't think it's really comparable to Stapleton, unfortunately, and it's a different category.
Could you speak to one more thing, just because of public comment and that there was a lot of discussion around it? 1795.130G, which is the agricultural clause in the urgency ordinance. Can you speak to the difference between the county ordinance and the urgency ordinance talking about agricultural?
Sure. Actually, when I first came here, that was an issue that was a hot topic, because in previous years, many people believed that marijuana cultivation was an agricultural practice and was therefore exempt from grading permits. The urgency ordinance clarified that that was not the case, and there was never any prior official position stating that it was, that was public perception. Additionally, cannabis cultivation, it was, under the principles of permissive zoning, not permitted. So it would have been illegal in any zoning area, so it couldn't be legitimate agricultural activity that's subject to the exemption.
I have a question as far as requiring the grading permit for the proportional adjustment. There was some statement made that the county often does retroactive grading permits or...
Well, we call them as-built grading permits. There's, it's just like an as-built structure. You can have code enforcement come out and look at it, and then sometimes they'll tear stuff apart, move it around, and get it in compliance with, when building from Public Works finds out that there's an area that's been graded, the person who's done the grading is illegal, the unit who's historical grading, they can come to Public Works, provide them with a grading permit application and remediation plans, and they'll get an as-built approval. And the purpose of that is obviously for erosion control and other remedial features, because if you have an unpermitted grading area, the county has no way of knowing that it's complying with standards unless you come in and get an as-built permit.
In this case, why the remediation, the indications from the county that remediation was needed, do you interpret that as a retroactive approval of what had been done before on the grading for the proportional adjustment?
Well, anyone could get an as-built grading permit to remediate otherwise unpermitted activity. I mean, so, but the purposes of her getting a remediation of her grading would be to close her code violation case and avoid whatever penalties might flow with her failing to do that. It has nothing to do with whether Peter will ultimately grant her registration.
That's, and it, I don't see where there's, that that excuses her from not getting a permit for the proportional grading the way the ordinance states it.
No, it wouldn't. I mean, grading without a permit is a violation of the code. The fact that you can later get an as-built permit to remediate your code violation is necessary to close your case. I mean, it wouldn't excuse it. It's the necessary remediation to your code violation.
Is that how you see it, Peter?
Yes, we require a grading permit, as-built grading permit, for any grading that was done without a permit, to ensure that it's stable, that proper erosion control measures are in place, and it really has nothing to do with whether or not they were allowed to do that grading under the ordinance. So even somebody who didn't even register will ultimately have to get a grading permit to button up the site and make sure that it's not creating an erosion problem. So the fact that they were told to get a grading permit and they, you know, in the process of doing it, doesn't really address the proportional, proportional grading issue. I guess that's really the question.
Does not.
Does not. I mean, it has to be done. The question is whether or not the grading that did occur, was it a proportional adjustment to the cultivation area based on what was there prior to May 10th?
Well, there's two questions there, whether it was proportionate and whether there was a permit for it.
Well, I think we know there wasn't a permit at that time. She has now gotten a, or is in the process of getting a, an as-built permit for that work.
But that does not excuse a violation of not having a permit before.
Correct. So the requirements were that the site plan needed to show the area of proportional adjustment, and the site plan that was submitted, it's Figure Four in the packet, shows some of the area. It's not quite accurate, because part of that northeast section was shown. There is nothing mentioning the 4,000 square feet at the lower end of the property. It identifies a gold mine. There is striped area above and part of that road area that was indicated as discontinued grading area. It's a little unclear in looking at the photos that were referred to in the presentation, how much of that site actually was in the setback. I tried to sketch in, and it looks like at some point in time, that area, the 9,000 square feet that Sean referred to, actually is outside the setback. So it's hard to know exactly how much of that area is available for the proportional adjustment. The site plan does not show anything as far as that 4,000 square feet below, and so that really shouldn't be counted. So it's, unfortunately, we don't have a very accurate site plan to know how much was there before, how much is proposed for grading. The site plan doesn't really reflect what was done, because it was graded, you know, further to the south, there was more grading done to the east part, there was certainly a lot of grading that was done to the west of the prior existing cultivation site. And frankly, I can't tell whether or not it equals the amount that was required for, to be moved out of the 75-foot setback. It would appear to us, based on what we've observed, that it was in excess of the amount that was within the setback.
I have another question for you, and that comes from that January 23rd email. Did that correctly reflect the policy of the planning department?
I think it was a simplification of the issue we were facing at the time. You know, clearly, there was beginning discussion of whether there were going to be significant changes in the direction the county was going with cultivation. A lot of cultivating... changes in that direction the county was going with cultivation. A lot of cultivators had removed their fence to make changes to the site, to clean up some of the mess. There was no plants in the ground, and so the need for the fencing was sort of temporarily not necessary. And there was a question, well, you know, should we invest thousands of dollars into a new fence if the county's just going to, you know, ban it? At one point in time, I think we were saying, let's hold off and see. And I discussed that with code enforcement personnel. After a short period of time, we said, you know, no, it's a requirement, it has to be fenced. And so, I don't think it's, it's not inaccurate, but I would say it may be an oversimplification of the discussions we were having at the time. Thank you.
Oh, Peter, was there any, were there any inspections between the January date and the last one I saw was May 23rd? Were there any in between?
I thought that there was, but apparently not, from what Courtney had stated. He inspected in January. There were some issues, again, because of the concern that had been expressed with the Stapleton issue, that people were giving adequate time to correct, and we were giving people an opportunity to correct some of the minor deficiencies, you know, and...
The denial letter is March 23, I believe.
I think that's correct, yes.
So, had there been an inspection just before it, just suddenly happened?
No, that was the inspection date, it was May 23rd, right?
There's a January and a May inspection here. As far as I know, nothing in between, but there's a denial letter, March. So, it just...
It was my understanding there had been another inspection, but based on the testimony today, apparently, there was not. I had asked code compliance to, you know, to re-inspect it, just to ensure, you know, I don't want, I don't want to deny an application without really fully looking at the picture. But when they came back to me and said, no, there's just, you know, a series of code compliance issues out there that are unresolved, particularly the grading, we felt it was appropriate to deny it at that point.
Make sure I understand your position on this grading area. This latest report that just came in this morning from Cal State doesn't change your position that they were violating, that the proportional numbers still are not in their favor.
I haven't had a chance to really look at the subject that just came in recently. It did not appear to us, based on what we saw available to us when we denied it, and up until the point that we submitted the staff report, that the grading that was done was proportional readjustment for the area within the setback.
Hi, very good, but I'm just, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? No? Okay, Sarah, would you like to rebuttal anything that was just said? Come on up.
Okay, thank you again for the time. I know my, my appeal's taking a lot of your guys' time, and I'm sorry for that. I first want to, I would like to go over a few of the technical things from these scratching notes I just wrote, so bear with me if I, while I try to make sure I can read them. The proportional adjustment on the slope was in my original badly drawn diagram that I turned in with my original application. I'm not a surveyor, I'm not an engineer. I did my best measurements, and I drew the best drawing I could to depict it without any current survey available to me at that time. I, the lower area is not shown on that map because I didn't grade that area. That area was graded prior to me even buying the property. It was part of the proportional adjustment. I had plants there. I was going to be, I was going to be growing 4,000 feet in that area prior to May 10th. I didn't have to grade it because it was already graded.
But it wasn't in the site plan itself?
Sorry, say that again.
But as I understand it, it wasn't in your site plan?
In my site plan? I did, I wish I had done a better job at my site plan. I didn't draw it to scale, I didn't, I did the best I could with that, and I wish I had done a more, a better job. I wish I had known exactly where the property line was. A lot of things have, I've learned about those issues since that time. One of the, one of the reasons I forgot to mention about the fence was that I was, the reason it wasn't done immediately while I had the equipment on the property after, I called Planning Department several different occasions over the next three or four months after May 10th, when the urgency ordinance happened, to ask them what sufficient materials could be used for building the fence, because I knew it had to be of reasonable strength to keep out intruders and children. I did not know what would suffice for those purposes according to the county, and I could not get, I couldn't get an answer at all. So, I held off hoping to get the correct information before spending the money. I know that it may not seem like a lot, but a few thousand dollars to make a fence that you're going to have to reconstruct with, and disregard the use of materials, is a lot of money when you're trying to run a business and make it in the world. There are extenuating circumstances beyond what I've described with the reason that the code violation took 18 months to remediate. I, it's a long story, so I didn't want to get into it earlier. I was forced into a lawsuit over the easement rights of the road to my property. A prescriptive and a easement by necessity existed on the property, but it had to be proven in a court of law. When a neighboring adjacent property owner took, took the position that I did not, I was not allowed to have the rights to access my property, and I spent nearly a year and almost $40,000 fighting for my rights to be able to access my property. That significantly set me back financially in what I was able to do on my site, as well as being able to come and actually get a building permit, which has always been my intention. I, one of the stipulations of a building permit is that you do have to be, you do have to have a legal deed at easement to the property. That lawsuit didn't, until September of last year, it was resolved, and I, I have the easement rights now to half of the road. The other half of the road, I still need to get in writing from the other property owners. I couldn't even fathom trying to do, to get both of those to happen at the same time. One lawsuit at a time is enough for me. I'm hoping to not have to go like that route. I didn't start the lawsuit, I had, I had to defend myself in it. The other half of the road, I, I am in friendly negotiations with those neighbors, and we're planning to continue figuring out the details and recording that easement with the county as soon as possible. After that time, I'll be able to get a building permit. However, that being said, as soon as I resolved the easement lawsuit, I, I realized there was also many more steps. I had been taking steps continuously through the time that, of that 18 months. In fact, that wasn't even 18 months because I have not been living on that land since October of 2016. And you can ask my parents, that's where, me and my entire crew have been living in their house and garage. And so anyway, getting back to my point, the, the building permit could not be obtained, and I was trying my hardest to get through the entire process. There's a lack of housing. There wasn't, my parents live a good 50 minutes, 55 minutes away from my grow site, and I did not feel comfortable leaving my grow site completely unattended at a time when I had some issues of harassment and potential...
Sarah, I need to interrupt you for just a minute.
Yeah, sorry.
It's not you.
Okay, sure.
We're going to run out of tape.
Oh, okay.
And so, we're going to have to stop and let her, so we have like about a minute and a half.
Okay. Should I just, should I pause and wait, or?
Well, you, you can pause and wait, which is probably recommended because we're getting off topic of what the rebuttal was.
Right, sure, sorry.
So, we're starting over, and we don't want to start over, we want to stay on rebuttal.
Okay, I'll, I'll pause and get back to the point.
So, you had a good list going, and so when we come back, let's hit that list, but let's take a 15-minute break, and everybody can run and get coffee.
Okay, that sounds great.
Thank you.